Am I on? Okay, I'm on. Good evening to everyone out there who's participating in this virtual meeting. We're so glad to have you here with us this evening. It's Thursday, July 16th, 6:30. And we welcome you to the village council meeting for the village of Royal Palm Beach. At this time, I'll ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, so... Oh, there you are. I was looking for you, Jan. You okay? Speak, can we hear you? Can you hear us?
I can hear you today.
You can hear us? Okay, there's a delay in the picture and the sound. All right, Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present, with Councilmember Dowsky attending virtually.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And with that, I have some housekeeping information I'd like to share with everyone. Since this is a virtual meeting, just want to go over some of the operating rules for this meeting. We ask that everyone please put their speakers on mute, because that eliminates any unnecessary background noise that we may be getting. For each item on the agenda this evening, the person or the applicant presenting for that item will not be unmuted until it's their turn to come on to the meeting. And when you do speak, please be sure, anyone who does speak, be there an applicant or they will, public comments, please be sure to identify yourself by name and address, so that we know who's speaking. Now regarding public comment, there are three phases of public comment we'll be taking. One is, we'll be reviewing public comment that was submitted in advance. And I think tonight, we have quite a few that were submitted in advance, and we'll be reviewing those comments. So be patient as we go through that process. We want to make sure that the people who submitted their comments earlier, so they wouldn't have to attend the meeting virtually tonight, but certainly not attended in person, that we are able to communicate their thoughts and their comments. The second component would be, anyone who is here who wants to submit a comment card, will be given an opportunity to speak as well. And the third one is, anyone who's attending remotely, and wants to participate in a public comment for each of the, any of the agenda items, please go on your screen and click the Raise Your Hand button. And that's being monitored by the village manager to let us know who those folks are, so we can include them. So we have those three components for addressing public comment this evening. The chat feature on GoToWebinar should not be used this evening. It will not be monitored, but we will be monitoring Raise Your Hand, so that you can be acknowledged if you want to make a comment. And I think that's it. The last meeting we had was a budget workshop just last week, and we did experience some technical difficulties with the sound from people who were speaking remotely. Hopefully, we've addressed that, and we won't experience the same sort of problems this meeting. I think that covers it all. So with that, we're going to begin the meeting. And I think this evening, our first item on the agenda is a presentation from the Supervisor of Elections, a representative from Supervisor of Election, Wendy Link. Wendy, are you on? Is she on?
No, I think now I'm on mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. It's very difficult. Sorry, I was talking to you. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. So I think they're trying to get it so that they can put me on. There we go. So thank you very much. I wanted to just tell you, I appreciate that you're allowing me to be here. And I wanted to just give you all any updates that I can about what's going on with your elections. As you know, we have a lot going on with COVID. We have the vote-by-mail ballots that's gone out. We now have sent out over 300,000 vote-by-mail ballots to residents. Now everybody is prepared to begin those now. And as we're going to the polls on the August 18th, and of course, if we're going to do early voting, we have between August 3rd and August 16th. And so I wanted to make sure that everybody knows, we're doing everything we can to keep voters safe if they choose to go to the polls. What we're looking at is having the poll workers, they'll have their temperatures taken as they go in, so that we know that nobody is, they can have a temperature down there working with their colleagues because they voted all day. They'll also have masks, gloves, facial shields for all of the poll workers. We have transparent shields for, in between every poll worker and the voters. And then for every voter, that we will have a mask, if they don't bring their own mask, we'll provide a mask for them, as well as a glove if they actually have a glove hand to do anything. And we will also have a firsthand sanitizer, and we'll have a different setting light. So we're going to do everything we can, especially this, as well as in the line, to make sure that voters are safe if that's what they want to be going to the polls. And that will be both for early voting and for election day voting. And then for those who are very concerned about standing in line and don't want to take that risk, vote-by-mail is a very good option for them to consider. And so you can request a vote-by-mail ballot up until August 8th. So by the clock PM, August 8th, you can still request a vote-by-mail ballot. It'll be sent to you. It is post-fee paid. So it's very easy to drop back in and return. And for those who are concerned about the postal service, if you hear people say that, you can actually drop it off at any one of our four offices. Or during the early voting period, you can drop the ballot off at any of the 18 early voting sites. So just wanted to let people know that there are a lot of different ways to get your vote-by-mail ballot, not being encouraged to do that. We want to look at that. We'll have early voting and election day voting, and we'll have it as safe as we can. In March, we had a doctor say that they thought that the voting locations in public scale were the cleanest places to be. And so we aim to try to have that reappeared again. So if you have any questions at all, if the voters have any questions, we're always happy to answer them. And just wanted to say thank you for letting us have the chance to sort of let voters know what's happening, to let you all know. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Well, first of all, we thank you for taking the time to come, to participate with us this evening in this virtual meeting. I have a question, and I'd like to open it up to members on council who may have questions as well. I guess my question is, I, there's been a lot of information in the news over the last several weeks about concerns of not having the ability for people to use the mail-in ballot option, rather than have to physically come to a polling place to vote. Are you seeing an increase in requests for vote-by-mail, as opposed to past elections?
We are. So to put it into perspective for you, we had 160,000 vote-by-mail requests for our March elections. We have already mailed out over 300,000 for this election. And of course, we still have many days left for people to make requests. So I'm getting asked, we'll probably mail out in, for August, maybe we'll mail out 325,000, 330,000 easily. So it'll be double what we had in March. So we are seeing a huge increase. But we are fortunate in Florida, there's a lot of people are asking about, well, can we handle this? It's going to be a lot, but we are going to be able to, we'll keep it up. We'll be able to run double shifts when we need to run double shifts. And the vote-by-mail ballots that we receive up through the day before the election, so please receive your vote-by-mail ballot through August 17th, that's Monday, it will be in the first set of results that are reported. So our first set of results includes early voting, as well as all of the vote-by-mail that we received through Monday. Then on Tuesday, we're processing everything that we received throughout that day. And of course, they can receive vote-by-mail ballots to be dropped off at our main office up until 7th. So, you know, we take some time to get those processed.
Okay, and the other question, once again, information that we've seen on the news has to do with the number of polling places within, and specifically, have we lost any polling places within the village of Royal Palm Beach that we would normally have during elections?
Not in the Royal Palm Beach yet. That's not true. I don't believe so. I can confirm that for you. We have lost, we lost one governmental rotation, and that was in sequester. It's an area that's going to be condemned. The other locations that we've lost have been private locations. And that's because the residents, the, most of them are either churches. We've had a couple churches, temples, and most of them are the residential public houses. And although they serve those voters, you know, they serve their own residents, the board of directors there have made the determination that they don't want to open up for the voters. And so we've had to move some of those. Some we've been able to move to a new location, a new school or something. And others we can use to existing locations that are the closest to that area as we can get.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open it up. I think you were, had your hand up.
Thank you. Good evening, Wendy. Appreciate you joining us this evening. And one other thing, first of all, I want to tell you, for the first time, we're going to do a mail-in. And the good news is, we actually got it. We got our ballot yesterday, so both of us. So we're going to be using that mechanism this time around. I've heard discussions about the differences between what we used to call, and maybe still exists, absentee ballots and mail-in ballots. Is there a distinction there?
There is not. So Florida used to have what they called absentee balloting. In 2002, the legislation changed and allowed for every voter is eligible for vote-by-mail. They just left the called absentee, just didn't have any requirement for it, until about 2016, when they changed the name to vote-by-mail. But since 2002, every voter who's eligible to vote has also been eligible for vote-by-mail. And so the, what sets us apart from some other states is, because of that, we've had mechanisms in place in Florida to anticipate having a lot of vote-by-mails turned in. Not the amount we're having now, but we at least have those procedures in place. Some other states that have only had true absentee voting, for example, some of them can't even open those ballots until election day. Well, we can start opening 22 days in advance. So that gives us the opportunity to keep up with it. And even if we're going to have to send those 300,000 ballots, we'll be able to do them over a 22-day period, which is going to help us out a lot.
Thank you.
Hi Supervisor Link. I don't envy you for your job and what you have to do and what you're facing. But I was wondering if you had a thought or opinion, because I've noticed there's considerable litigation regarding the ability of felons to vote. And I wanted to know if you thought the, you know, the Supreme Court, from what I saw on television today, has upheld the injunction or the stay that the 11th Circuit did. Do you think that's going to help make your process easier, as opposed to more complicated? Or you just don't know?
You know, it actually isn't going to affect our process. We wanted as many voters who are eligible, if they're eligible to vote, to run and voting. But for our process, because for us, as long as the voter was willing to sign and say the day where they had their rights had been restored, we're not the ones that made that determination. They needed to go to the public defender, the court of courts, or some other gate to help determine whether or not those steps had been completed, and whether or not they had restored two things that's taken. So that, if they signed the, as long as they signed their application, we would send it to the state. The state would just do a test to make sure that they weren't still incarcerated or something like that. And as long as that was the case, they would approve it. So so far, we've gotten very, very, very few things back from the state telling us that somebody was not acceptable. So I don't know if that'll change, but it really doesn't affect our process, because we're very material.
Good evening. Thank you very much for presenting tonight. Just for clarification, the biggest difference with the vote-by-mail this year is that it is prepaid postage now, so people don't have to pay back. Thank you.
Right, now that's very important, because it will make it easier for people. As soon as they get it, they can vote or write back in the mail-in box if they choose to, or drop it off, but it is prepaid postage.
Jan? I can't hear you.
All of these, the mute button. Good evening, and thank you for all you do, Wendy. I know that that job is not easy, and you've done a yeoman's work. So we appreciate all you do to help get voters to vote as easy as possible in all the different ways that you've provided. So thank you. Thank you. So now we definitely, we like working with, we want to work with our city partners too, because we know you all are the ones who are seeing your residents and can help get word out and about what we need to hear. And it's great when you all are informed, because that just helps to get the right information out. So I appreciate you all taking the time to learn this.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we'd like to thank you so much Supervisor Link. As I said, coming here this evening, and you've got, I know you've got a lot of work ahead of you in this election season, and we're sure you're going to continue to do the great job you've been doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. And please don't hesitate to call our office if you have any questions or need anything that we can do for you. We're happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, the next item we have on the agenda is a special letter in recognition of Parks and Recreation, because I guess July is Parks and Recreation Month? Okay. Now normally, we would do a proclamation and kind of a board, an award, a board that we would have Lou here, and we present it to him, and have a nice photo op. But operating under the virtual meeting model, instead, what we're going to do tonight, I'm going to read a letter into the record from the council to Lou Recio, Director of Parks and Recreation, dated today. And it's, because it's Parks and Recreation Month for 2020, rather than the usual presentation of proclamation celebrating Parks and Recreation Month, I thought it would be, I thought I would share some thoughts on how our parks have impacted our community and its residents. Parks have always served as a place where people can go to find peace and relaxation. Never has this been more evident than during the public health crisis that has gripped the entire nation for months. We know that the CDC has identified mental and physical wellness as a concern associated with COVID-19. And what better outlet to recharge and rejuvenate than our parks? The mere presence of parks and green space helps promote psychological well-being and greater quality of life. Over the past few months, the need and desire for our parks and green spaces to open for our residents has been overwhelming. Whether it's a fast-paced activity such as basketball, tennis, racquetball, soccer, baseball, or something slower paced such as bocce, golf, fishing, bicycle riding, or swimming, and let us not forget pickleball. Swimming or parks here have proven to be an important and essential part of our lives, people young and old alike. One of the primary pillars of Parks and Recreation is to make parks and open spaces accessible to everyone, and to be a champion of inclusiveness, fairness, and social equality. Parks and Recreation departments throughout the country have historically been the driving force in bringing communities together. This has become more evident now during these very challenging times than ever before. It is times like these that we gain a greater appreciation for parks and recreation as an essential service provided by, in this case, local government. So at this time, during Parks and Recreation Month 2020, I would like to commend our entire staff for the outstanding work and dedication in keeping our parks maintained and safe for providing programs and activities for our residents to enjoy, especially during these trying times of this pandemic. Parks and recreation are a central part of our community. So thank you, and we applaud you. We know you're out there, Lou. Are you, are you? Somewhere, are you online? Is he online? Okay.
It's a good distinction.
I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure you were able to hear that. All right, we're going to go now to reports. And I'll start out with a report from this morning. We had the Transportation Planning Agency Board meeting. And we, those meetings usually occur on a third Thursday every month. So this is the third Thursday. Anyway, just a couple of highlights from the meeting I'd like to share with the council and everyone who's participating in the meeting. One is, we adopted, hold on. We adopted the fiscal year 22 to 26 list of TPA Priority Projects. Now this is important, because the list of these priority projects guides development of the Florida Department of Transportation, better known as FDOT, and the development of their five-year work program, and the TPA's, as well as the TPA's Transportation Improvement Program, better known as TIP. And once again, West Palm Beach requested a vote to remove the State Vote 7 project from, the project up to Northlake, from the list. And once again, the vote failed. I think it was a 16 to 4 vote, actually, in actual count. The other major accomplishment this morning was we approved the TPA's Fiscal Year 21 Strategic Plan. The TPA has established, starting back in, established a strategic plan, starting back in 2016, to develop a guide for its conduct for the upcoming 12-month year, beginning in July 1, ending in June 1. The fiscal year for the TPA is June 1 to June, July 1 to June 30th every year. Now each year, the TPA reviews the prior year's performance, and then updates the plan to identify specific and relevant actions that advance the TPA's mission and vision. In general, there were updates made to this year's plan, and the updates included, that were included, were focused on increasing stakeholder engagement and project planning. We actually have experienced this past year, and I see us continuing to engage in that in a greater sense, input and feedback from various municipalities, or even unincorporated areas across the county, with an opportunity to opine on concerns they may have on certain projects that may be teed up by FDOT, that they feel may have impacts to their qualities of life or other things within their regions. So we think it's a good thing that we're focusing going forward on continuing with that additional engagement. So we continue to get that feedback and have that more, better collaboration with those entities. Other updates included an adjustment to the number of studies, some specific benchmarks that we're looking to achieve, some of the other activities. And this is done particularly given that we're operating still within the COVID-19 pandemic environment. So that was pretty much the highlights of the meeting this morning. And with that, Jan, we're going to start with you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I just have one thing to report. And that is, the Palm Beach County Intergovernmental Issues Forum will hold its first virtual meeting on July 30th at 1:00 PM. And there's three issues on the agenda. One is housing updates. The other one is school board issue request on the digital divide. And then the third one is annual membership de-acquisition. So we'll participate in that on the 30th, and then I'll report back from that meeting.
Okay. That's, that's it? Thank you.
Well, following up on the theme of Parks and Rec, you know, we continue to do the Feeding South Florida activity on Wednesdays over at Commons Park. And we're still getting a pretty big turnout there.
Did we run out again?
Well, we actually, we actually ran out of a good portion of food this time around.
I guess that's a good thing, though, no?
And, and there are obviously a lot of families who still need the help. And so we understand that Florida, Feeding South Florida has committed to do this through the end of August.
End of August, that's correct.
Do this, and I want to, again, just thank the rec staff and the volunteers for all their work. And actually, we had our captain and lieutenant out there two weeks ago with the District 9 street team. That was an interesting comment.
The street team was out there?
Yeah, the street team was out there. So I'm sure that created an interesting look as people drove up for the food.
Were they out there in the street team?
They were wearing their uniforms, fully equipped. So it was an interesting experience, and they did a great job. Everybody enjoyed having them out there.
Everybody made sure to behave themselves.
So that's continuing, and the volunteers are continuing. And we've got, you know, some really good things going on there. I think it's a great community activity. Yesterday, we had our monthly board meeting for the League of Cities. And it was held here in Royal Palm Beach at the Cultural Center. And of course, as usual, the Cultural Center, the staff did a great job putting everything together. This is the first time that I've seen us use a virtual meeting technique on a large screen. Kind of like being in an arena, kind of a, kind of a thing. And so we plugged into all that high-tech we got over there. And, and we conducted the meeting. I think, I think it went well. We did a couple of things. One was, we approved the budget for the coming year. But we also talked about the idea of actually, and the need for doing an update to the League's strategic plan. We hadn't done it in a while. And, you know, we're pretty good at using our strategic plan to build our budget. So as we were talking about the budget, that kind of came up. The other thing, of course, we did was, as we do with our village manager, we do a performance evaluation for the executive director, Richard Radcliffe. And so we conducted that, and he's been doing a really, really good job. It also turns out that his contract is up the end of September. So it was put to vote and approved to extend his contract for three years. So he has done an outstanding job. And, and of course, you get to see it up close and personal, kind of like you do as mayor when you're president of the league. You spend a lot of time, and you get to see really what, what he and the staff does, which I was very impressed with. And then especially hitting the coronavirus, or having it hit us. He engaged fully in this EOC daily briefing for a while. So he did a really good job. Florida League of Cities Annual Conference is going virtual totally. It's going to be online. And they're going to have a reduced agenda. It's basically going to be nothing but business activities. One of them is a series of resolutions, which are interesting. But probably the most significant thing is a selection of new leaders for Florida League of Cities for the coming year. Mayor Ann Gerwig is running for one of the vice president positions. So we want to wish her, wish her well, and hope that she's successful this year. And, and again, like I said, the Cultural Center is a great place to have a meeting. It worked out really well, although it, I mean, you could really, really separate people in the ballroom.
It's a lot of space.
It was, I mean, I could hardly see the people across the way. It was, that is a lot of, a lot of space, but it worked out well. It really did. And I appreciate the good support.
In general, was everyone compliant with the rules?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I mean, we, I think we overkilled it, but that's all right. That's, that's a good thing.
I'd have error on that side than that, I guess.
Absolutely.
We want to keep people safe. That's the key.
And once again, you know, we, we still have a vacancy for an Education Advisory Board member. And we, we're going to put out another news release to invite people to apply. This year, I mean, like everything else, we're going to be doing it differently. It's holding our monthly meetings. In addition to probably the majority of them, or at least for a while, being virtual, we are going to be operating in a very dynamic environment. So last night, I don't know if you all stayed up the whole time, but I went as long as I could watching and feeling the pain.
School board meeting? Yeah, I had to bail out on that one too. That was, that was a pretty long meeting, 10, over 10 hours, I think.
That was, so, you know, talk about public input. About five hours of that, right? And then they finally got around eight or nine o'clock to actually deal with and address the recommendation of the superintendent, which is a staged approach, four stages and that type of thing. And of course, the initial stage will be online. And very difficult, very challenging balancing act that I And, um, very difficult, very challenging, uh, balancing act that I, I think they, they have tried, um, to do the right thing. And, and, uh, the flexibility is a real key. Uh, I, I think from what they said, even though they didn't decide on an opening date specifically, they will be doing that next Wednesday. And what they are, um, I think committed to is trying to do the reopening, start the reopening, not later than the end of August, to be in compliance with the governor's direction and that type of thing. So, um, the reason I say this is because if, uh, with the dynamic nature of what's gonna be coming up this year, our Education Advisory Board might serve, uh, well as a communications platform for getting word out on things.
That's a good point. Um, we might wanna look at what, what can be done here that we can help as much as we can for our citizens to be informed, because there is a lot of, a lot of angst out there about this. And, uh, as we mentioned before, you know, you got parents who now, you know, they are going back to work. They need, you know, what do they do with the kids? Usually they go to school and they go to aftercare. There was a report this morning that, you know, we might have a severe impact, uh, in general, not just locally, uh, on the number of aftercare operations that will be able to continue. So it's a lot of complexities here.
There is. Very, very dynamic, very challenging period.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
I don't have any report, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, from Jeff's discussion and what you just mentioned, I would think it might be a good idea when the, uh, school board finalizes what the, what the plan is. It might be a good idea, at least, um, a lot of people don't get to watch the school board meetings. I'm assuming they'll get it on the media, but maybe putting it up on our village signs.
We will, we will not only put it up on our village signs. Any communication where we're pushing things out, we will make sure to include that information. So, make sure we get the.
Good point. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we are still in the midst of a census, so the village has information out there on it. The other one is, is that there's one geared specifically to children. So it's really nice to see that they're hitting all different age groups and the importance of it. Um, the new service guide is out from the county, so if you go in there and get that, it just has all the information that you need about the whole, about the county and every department you can think of. So definitely stop by, and they have census information, but definitely stop by and grab one of those. Um, thank you South, Feeding South Florida, because it is over at Commons Park from, Wednesdays from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and that is through the end of August as of right now. There is, the lighting has been, uh, added on to Okeechobee on State Road, going through to State Road 7. So it's really nice to see when you come in at night now, you can actually see the difference. It's not that black zone like it used to be. Um, the body temperature cameras are up, so as you go into our facilities, whether it's the rec center or the cultural center, just be patient, because there is a new way to go through and just work with staff, and they'll get everybody in and out in a timely fashion. Uh, talking about the schools with public schools and the delay in that, uh, private school enrollment is up over 200% throughout the county. And that is because they run on their own system and are going back. So if there's that, we're not sure when public schools are starting, parents are starting to enroll their children in pu, in private schools where they do have an exact start date.
I know. I saw the information that the, the Catholic schools would be reopening. But in, in, in general, you're saying all of the private schools are, are gonna be on campus?
They, I don't, I cannot speak for all private schools. I can say though, is that private school enrollment is up. And because they can start and ju, yeah, and they can start.
And I, and I think part of it's probably that is parents saying, hey, I gotta be able to drop my child off so I can go to work and that whole program. That's reality. I mean, that's, it's, and I'm sure a lot of those parents may still have some concern and trepidation that hopefully their child is gonna be okay. So, this is, this is not, it's not easy. It's not, this is not easy, so.
No, absolutely. Um, the other thing is, is, uh, single-family home sales are up. So, yeah, you can look and say is that.
And there's a shortage of homes.
Well, that, that's where it, it.
So we know what that means.
Where, exactly. So, you know, yes, it could look that there's a low interest rate, yes, people are relocating.
Well, that's, it's a perfect storm. Interest rates, I don't think, I can't remember when they were this low. They are like really, really low, so.
So, and that, um, but, uh, the thought is, is some people don't, people who are living in apartments before or, uh, public spaces do not wanna be in those public spaces. They rather have a single-family home in private.
So that's another factor that's driving it.
Correct. So they're not stuck in an elevator with their tenant, with residents, you know, they're neighbors. So now they have the space. So just interesting to see is how all of this shifts in. Um, there are, and thank you again to Supervisor Link for reporting today, there are a few reminders that she wanted to pass on. The primary, primary election is on August 18th, and polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The SEO office needs poll workers to work the upcoming elections, and they do get paid. And the other thing is, is they've turned it into a fundraiser too. So if you wanna work together as a group, you get paid, and then you can, uh, donate your funds to an organization. So they've turned it into a fundraiser to help get poll workers.
Are they having a challenge getting poll workers?
I believe they are. They've said that they've had people, because you have to remember, it's a long day.
Yeah.
You have to go through training. You have to commit to the time to be there, and now you're also dealing with the public.
And under this COVID thing? And if I'm not mistaken, a lot, usually a large number of, of senior citizens are working at capacity, so it's.
It's a 12 to 14-hour day, so when you think of, you know, you either take a day off of work or you're not working and you can afford to do that. Uh, but they are paying, and they did, uh, raise it, I think it's between 190 and $230 that you can get paid, depending on what your position is. Yes. Yeah. So it is, and then the, the other thing is they've turned it in so you can, uh, partner with a nonprofit too. You still have time to request your vote-by-mail ballot if you choose to vote by mail. The deadline to request a ballot to be mailed to you is 5:00 PM on August 8th. Voters can reach the SEO's office at 561-656-6200, or visit their website, pvelections.org for more information. And don't forget to vote. Uh, and finally, I believe in part of the village manager's report this evening, I would like to say congratulations to all of our employees on their work milestones. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, I have one thing I'd like to do. When we started these remote meetings, electronic meetings, uh, one of the things we stopped was inviting people to our meetings. So one of the things that got stopped in that was the recognizing employees. We typically recognize employees at the five, 10, 15, 20, 30-year anniversaries. Well, we were getting several piling up, and when we first started this, we didn't know how long this was gonna be. It looks like we're gonna be in this for a while. I've got a, a list of 10 of them here that I, I, I'm not going through their resumes or anything like that, but I just wanted to.
Just gonna read their names?
I'm just gonna read their names, what department they're with, and, and, and their number of years. So, uh, the first one is, uh, Frito, uh, wrote with Parks and Recreation, 10 years. The next one is Warren Meeks. He works in our Public Works Department in the, in the shop. He's the one who maintains our vehicles. Uh, he's been here for 15 years. Deanna Foley is in our Code Enforcement, and September she'll be here for 15 years. Monica Bowles, our HR and, and Risk Manager, uh, 15 years. Paul Webster, he'll be having his 20-year anniversary.
Wow.
Chris Wax, uh, who's been in, is in the, uh, Executive Secretary in our office right now, the ma, the mayor's and the council and, and the manager's office, was in the Bill, in the Planning Department. I think started in the Planning Department, went to Finance, and now is in the, in the Executive Secretary position in our office, uh, 20 years. Chris Marsh, 20 years. He came, the engineer, our, our village engineer, he came here.
He came here.
After graduating from FSU.
Let the record show that Richard was acknowledging FSU.
Let the record show I'm not commenting whether that's good or bad.
Yeah, right.
Mike Cheatham, 30 years. And, uh.
30 years?
30 years. Mike Cheatham hit 30 years. Mike Cheatham is in our Public Works Department. He's a superintendent there.
Yeah, I know Mike, yeah.
And, uh, he's been here 30 years.
Boy, he's seen, he's seen a lot of water going to the dam or under the bridge.
Yes, he has. And he's in charge of our bridges.
Yeah, there you go. That's it.
And last but not least, 35 years, our longest-serving public employee, Diane DeSantos.
Let's give a hand to all, to all of them, especially Diane. I don't, I don't know how you pulled that off. How did you get, start working here when you were 10 years old? I don't understand it.
Think you'll make a career out of it? I know we normally do more and we read more into it, but, you know, I've had a lot of these, obviously, piling up. We didn't know where we were going. I just wanted to recognize these 10 for this period of time.
I'm sorry that that kinda, it kinda got biased. I'm glad you brought us up to date on that. But why don't we, um, continue to do the recognition as we did, the only difference is it would be remotely going forward so that we don't stack them up again. That, that okay? We can do that?
We can do that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Either that or next time we talk about Diane, she'll be going for 50th.
Diane's saying, she's shaking her head, no, alright? That's impressive, Diane. It really is. You, you've seen a lot of, you've seen a lot of water under the bridge too. Okay. Mehdi, can you hear us?
I can, yes, Mayor. I don't have anything specific for you.
What'd you say? No report?
No report, no, sir.
Okay, alright. And then I'm gonna tell you what's happening. I see your face, and there's a delay when I see the lips move, and then I hear this, then I hear it. It's like those movies.
It's a cult movie.
Well, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, good. Alright, I think then that completes our reports this evening. Uh, at this time, um, do we have any petitions that were presented for the council? Cause there's no one here to present one, so.
No, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm closing acceptance of, of petitions. I have no comment cards that were submitted to me, and I will ask for statements from the public on non-agenda items or items on the consent agenda. Do we have any pre-submitted comments?
No public comments were received.
Okay. Do we have, uh, anyone out there right now who's got their hand raised, who would like to comment non-agenda items or the consent agenda?
No, I, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, now I'm gonna close public comment then on non-agenda items and on consent agenda items, okay? And with that, Diane, can you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of May 21st, 2020, and council special meeting of June 4th, 2020. Two, tentative adoption of the proposed millage rate of 1.9200, and approval of scheduled public hearings on September 8th, 2020 at 6:30 PM, and September 17th, 2020 at 6:30 PM in the village meeting hall. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the second addendum to purchase agreement for the provision of sports lighting equipment and services with Musco Sports Lighting, LLC, for Royal Palm Beach Commons Park lighting. The cost for said services shall not exceed $189,500, and funds will come from Project PR 1903. Four, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute change order number one for lighting at Royal Palm Beach Commons Park with DABCO Electrical Contractors Corporation. The cost for said services shall not exceed $121,356.66, and funds will come from Project PR 1903 Commons Park lighting. Five, approval, bid award, and authorization for the village manager to enter into an agreement with Seeds Cafe, LLC, the sole responsive responsible bidder for a monthly lease amount of $300 for the use of the cafe building located at 1036B in Veterans Park for food and beverage services. And six, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a renewal contract with Calla Doctor Plus and a renewal contract with Cigna Healthcare to provide health, dental, and life disability insurance for the employees of the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
Alright, thank you, Diane. Uh, any comments from members on council regarding the consent agenda?
May I just pull number five, please?
Pull number five. Okay. Alright, if not, then I'll look for, um, a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number five.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda except for number five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the, the record show that the consent agenda was approved, um, 5-0 with the exception of item five, which we will now review.
And, and I don't have a, a problem with it. I just wanted a little bit more detail from the village manager, because considering the times that we're having, this is the cafe over in Veterans Park. When they're gonna open, if Veterans Park isn't open yet, uh, when are they looking to come in? Are they just gonna be, what type of cafe or services? Just so the public knows.
I did ask Lou to unmute his, uh, he's unmuted, and he can answer the timing of, well, let's turn to, turn to Lou. He's, he's there and can, and can answer the questions. Go ahead, Lou.
Yeah? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, bas, basically it was, um, you know, we had individuals that came forward that were interested in it. They, they feel very confident that they can meet the work. They realize, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic, uh, and we've got the contract that is not effective until September. And depending on, you know, the, the outcome, by the time they get set up, um, they, they are prepared. They are prepared to do it in the fall, um, not, not at this time. But again, the contract is not gonna be effective until September 1st.
It won't be effective, he said, until September 1st?
Well, what they'll do is, they'll get in there between now and September and get the place all set up and everything. And then when they're ready to open their doors in September, then that's when they'll start paying the, the monthly fee.
Okay.
If, if I may, the, the owners are residents, and they've been residents for a number of years. And they know the, the type of traffic and the possible clientele, uh, is limited, and they realize that.
Okay.
So it's, it's not gonna be a two-star restaurant.
I'm glad they're aware of the, the market challenge that they, they have to, to overcome. Okay, we wish them well.
Thank you, Lou.
Thanks, Lou.
I make a motion to approve regular, uh, consent agenda item number five.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda item number five was approved 5-0. Alright, with that, we're gonna move on to the regular agenda. Uh, agenda item R1 is a public hearing to consider variance application 20-13, an application by Tanya Mills in variant, in a variance order VC 20-04. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 26-5, uh, 57 to allow for a reduced yard, a reduced side yard setback of zero feet, where village code requires 10 feet. A variance of 10 feet, which is a variance of 10 feet, for an existing, uh, pergola. For a property located at 203 Bob White Road, this is a quasi-judicial, uh, item, so I'll ask Mehdi to swear in.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, do we have the resident on the phone unmuted? Can you hear me, Miss Mills?
We have no one physically here. I guess they're going to present remotely, right?
Yes. Bradford will. He's got, he's got the presenter. He's setting it up now. Bradford, can you hear us?
This swearing-in has to happen first.
Mehdi.
Go ahead Bradford with the presentation. We'll let Miss Mills, she's on the phone, she's unmuted, so go ahead Bradford, and I'll swear in when you're finished.
Okay. Um, the applicant is requesting a balance from section 2657 to allow for a reduced side yard setback. A BFC for a side yard, and there is a 70-12 yard setback required by village state. The applicant seeks to take your necessary limitations to say the protection concerning the state. As you have top 70 to 80 to lift the vehicle, can you really water me a blanket that limits to each species? In the case of law, that's, that's true conditions, while limiting the flexibility to plant live and reduce a set of current conditions that are not ideal. Village said that we call mailers, we have evidence, and since we want to check range it, and we think it's copy, and find property that is a variance despite. The applicant did not receive any, uh, the village should not receive any in passing, you know, spray or jetting to the application.
Bradford.
The applicant has to add the volume two letters and support, and then cross the street. Again, from the, the edge to the south, which is definitely dangerous to copy down on the paper that is registered.
There it goes.
If we are changed, the application to play that in green. Village chose section 26-30 feet as it allows the best chances of current basis to engage well separate conditions and separate space to be dipped. That we get from the app, the applicant, the applicant probably acted in separate privileges. Any applications for business or business is required by the act of the right company to get on the property. Will be a harmony that could get on certain purposes. Such as, that the, the area involved will just come in the public trust register. That is not to pay the bills because that means they have made separate conditions or significant cases exist. Condition is we get the access to the applicant. We have to care on the active such a privilege that is not other way. Any applications for change to stop the act of the right to give the other way. We say any distance, any conditions that seem to be applicable on 2024. And that's another, to allow that a date of 31, that's naturally that's the incentive. This is what we set up on the back of the news. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mills, are you on the phone? This is the fellow attorney. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the project judicial proceeding. Can you raise your right hand for me?
Yes.
Do you swear on this other truth, the whole thing or nothing else with me?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the council and ask the jury if I take a closer on this agenda item.
None.
None.
Good. Thank you. Back to Mr. Mills.
What did she just say?
Ms. Mills, do you have a presentation?
No, I do not. I do not. I think I was asking for the last one, because I was telling my neighbors affirming whether they were okay with the architecture or not. And I said, oh.
Who's speaking? Okay. Can you, ma'am, can you continue speaking? We're not hearing anything.
Are you not able to talk?
You're going in and out.
Listen, if I could, I think what she was saying is she was just gonna answer questions. So if the council has any questions for her, she doesn't have a formal presentation to make.
Mitty said that the applicant did not have a presentation to make.
Who said that?
Mitty, the attorney.
That was Mitty? There was no, there was no presentation from the applicant? No comments from the applicant?
That's for sure. She gets in there to answer questions.
Okay. Just so, just so we're clear, Bradford, go ahead.
Let me ask you a question. Bradford, this question is for, for you. Did the, did the applicant have letters from her neighbors either objecting or not objecting to the variance request?
Okay, um, can you hear me better now?
I did not understand what you said, Bradford. Are you talking on the phone or are you talking on your computer?
I'm talking on my work phone.
We're not able to understand you.
Can, can you hear me now, Ray? Can you hear me now, Ray?
Could definitely hear you better.
Okay, so I, I, I'm working with my work phone and I'm working with my cell phone. So I'm working on my cell phone now. Would you like me to come over there, Ray?
Yeah, that would be better.
Did you type in it?
Okay.
He's on the computer. Why don't we have a camera?
He's good. He's right across, he's right in his office right here. He's gonna come over.
He's coming over?
Yeah, he's gonna come over.
There's a thought. Alright, well, um, we're, we're waiting for Bradford to come over here to continue his presentation. But Ray, maybe you can ask a couple of questions in the meantime.
Okay.
Is, what is the recommendation from staff on this variance?
The staff recommendation is denial.
Denial.
And it is my understanding that they, she did get letters of support from, from a couple neighbors.
Well, the real neighbor of concern is the one that's right adjacent to her, I would think, no?
And my understanding is-
This is right against the, the property line, so to speak.
My understanding is she did get a letter of not objecting to that, but Bradford can confirm that when he comes in.
Okay. I think you forgot his mask. Oops! He doesn't, he can't hear us. I don't think. He's gone. Yeah, he's fast. Yeah. Okay, moving on. What, what remedy could be applied here? My understanding is that the, this was a, a structure that was in place previously. But for some reason, I don't know if she's a new occupant of this residence. They redid it and now, before, it didn't, it wasn't above the fence, so no one could see it. But now it went above the fence. Which brings it to attention, I guess.
This resident did move in within the last-
I can't-
Go ahead, Ms., go ahead, Ms. Mills.
Thank you, sorry. The trees and plants were so overgrown that it can't catch those. But once we cleared out the overgrowth, after we discovered that the existing pergola or structure was rotted and we took it down. My center section is higher, but the outside sections are not higher than the original.
So she said, she, there was, there was one there. It was rotting. They took that down and did put a taller one in. That is correct.
Alright, okay. That's, okay, that's my thought.
Bradford, did you hear what we just went through? That there was a pergola there, it was rotted. They did put a new one in and it was raised.
Bradford, you can, you can remove your mask while you speak at, at the- I know, we saw you. We, we tried to grab you. You were going so quick. Alright, while Bradford is bringing up his presentation, I'll ask Diane, for this agenda item R1, have we received any advance comments?
No public comment cards.
No advanced public comments? Okay. Is there any one out there right on the call, on the meeting who has their hand raised? Who would like to make public comment on this agenda item R1?
No, there is not, but-
Alright, for now-
There's no attendees. So that's unusual. I had 10 and it looks like I have zero now. So either everybody hung up. So there is nobody with their hand up out there.
No, just for your information, Ray, I was told to upgrade them because most of them have to speak.
Oh, okay. Is that where they went?
Yes, they're in the staff. Basically.
Just for clarification then, so there was a structure previously on the property. It was rotted. The current resident tore it down and rebuilt it. But when it was rebuilt, was it higher than what the structure was prior? Okay.
The center section is higher. The outer, there's three sections and the center is about a foot and a half or two foot higher than the existing one. But the, the sides to the left and right of that are the same as what it was previously.
Okay.
Did the applicant say it was a foot higher? One foot higher? Is that?
I think it's a foot and a half to two foot higher.
Okay. And so, so did that increase in height create the violation? Or was it, or was the old structure violation?
It most likely created the visibility of the violation from public property. It, it's a six-foot fence there and if it was at or below the six-foot fence, it most likely would have never been seen. They constructed it above the six-foot fence and now it can be seen from the roadway. And that's what alerted code enforcement this past year to it.
And what is the height of the structure now?
It, it appears to be seven, eight feet in most of the section and about nine feet in the tallest section.
In the middle, yeah.
And Brad, Bradford, was a permit pill, was a permit pulled for the work itself?
Yeah, and he can't, he's- I just need to bring up presentations for the next items. So I'll probably stay over here.
Good idea.
I do not believe a permit was pulled for the, for the trellis work. If the applicant has different information that, that, let us know, please.
No, that is correct. We, we didn't know to pull a permit for that. We were just, we thought we were just replacing a structure.
I don't know what she said. I think, she didn't think.
She, she didn't think she needed one because she was replacing the structure.
Right.
And then, I don't know if this is a Bradford question or a Rob Hill question, but I'm sure you can answer it, Ray. For clarification, the height for fencing is six feet. But I remember quite a few years ago, the council then changed hedges could be up to eight feet. Is that correct?
Hedges on the side and the back can go to eight feet. That is correct.
And then the, the fence itself needs to be at six feet. So we don't have anything specifically for structures of, additional structures or any other?
Well-
Fences are maximum six feet. We do address accessory structures in our code and we do address height of accessory structures. And the way we address it is accessory structures typically need to be 10 feet from the property line in most of our zoning districts. And at the 10 feet, they're not allowed to be higher than eight feet. And for every foot they're higher than eight feet, they have to be another foot setback in addition to the 10. So if it's, if it's 10 feet tall, it has to be 12 feet from the property line.
But in, in this case, because of the height of this one, that's why we're saying the setback requirement was 10 feet. No, no, but that's what the variance is asking.
Yeah.
We're saying it, it, it should be 10 feet and they're requesting zero.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
And then Bradford, did, she say there were letters of support?
Yes, ma'am. I probably couldn't hear me through my presentation.
Have you, you have these letters? Do we have them on file?
Yes, sir. We have two letters. One from the south, the owner to the south, which is adjacent to the property line that this pergola is located. And then there was another letter that was presented to us for across the street.
And, and both were support?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Diane, you have to make sure you get a hold of those letters for, for official file.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and they would have, I would have represented that in my agenda item summary. However, I received those after.
After? Okay, okay. Alright, going back to public comment, do we, are we sure that there's no one out there with their hand raised?
I'm gonna have to turn to Raymond. We upgraded everybody to panelist. And unless I unmute everybody, I can, they, they can't raise their hand.
No. Just go to meetings different than Zoom. I'm, I'm, I've been leaned on Zoom. I've been, I've seen Zoom meetings.
Yeah. Much easier.
It seems like it. I don't know.
Do not have anybody that has sent, sent in a request to speak. I, I do not have anybody that sent in a request to speak.
No? Okay. With that, then I have no physical comment cards. We have none that was submitted in advance. So I'm gonna close public comment on agenda item R1. Opening up for additional comments from council.
And I, I think my concern with these going back and forth is that we've seen, in this five years I've been sitting up here, we've seen multiple variances. And every time the applicant says, I didn't know I need a permit. So I think my concern is, is what can we do to let residents know before they do anything that they do need to check if they need a permit? This way, this will cut down on a lot of these. You know, it is quite a, a high structure. It's, if her neighbors don't have a problem with it, you know, I'm not sure going forward, you know, on that end. I would just, I'd like to make sure that residents know you do need to check to find out if you need a permit before you do any structural things to your property.
So we, we need to be a little bit more aggressive in putting out that information, I guess, is what you're saying to the public.
Check, because every variance that comes in, oh, I didn't know I needed one.
That's a good point.
We definitely have that for every other thing that we've done here with the roof or the fence or the additional structure on the back of the home. There were a lot of things not permitted here that we did get permitted. Everything we've done, that's probably the only thing. We've been here just over a year. And that's the only thing that we didn't realize we needed to do. We didn't move over from the other coast. But yeah, we did obtain permits for everything else we've done here.
Go ahead, Jac.
Okay, thank you for getting them.
So what I was gonna say is that I, I think the village put out a handbook for, of code and, and code, typical code violations kind of thing to make people aware. If we could add something to that, because I don't remember there being anything about permits kind of a thing. Maybe that's a good way to get the word out. And, and with that, hopefully we'll see fewer of, of these kinds of things. The other thought that occurred to me is with the structure already there, the inclination might have been to just assume that replacing this structure wouldn't require any specific action and that kind of thing. So that was one of the reasons I was asking you. Well, I was also curious as to whether or not that existing structure was already in violation. Whether you could see it or not, it's still a height thing. But with the structure being there, I could see the inclination of assuming that there was no need to do anything. You just want to replace the structure. And if you happen to change it a bit, nevertheless, getting the word out on permits is good.
Oops, yeah. Jan, you have some thoughts?
I'm, I agree with my fellow council. I think more education on, if the replacement pieces, I didn't know about replacing a pergola with another one. And, and trying to mitigate those sorts of arguments about not getting permits.
What was the last one? I didn't get-
She was saying about making, getting the word out that they do need a permit.
We need to do that.
Check to find out if you do need a permit, correct?
Maybe in the vector?
Right.
I think, or everything, whatever, any, any is for-
Our channel.
You know, our monthly, our weekly, whatever.
We do, we do that. I, I, we do that.
Breaking news, you know, you need permits.
Yeah. And that, that won't stop people from saying they don't need a permit.
It may not, but, but here's, I think, and I, it just goes to the point I think Salina's making is, you know what? If we take that effort and that action, then it becomes kind of a buyer beware scenario. You know, we, we put the word out there in every way we could. So-
We do.
To say that, oh, I didn't know, becomes less of an argument.
We send out a new, to, to new, all new residents, we send a package to. All new businesses, we send a package to. And I, whether people read the stuff we send to them, I, I, I can't.
You can't account for that. That's true. Yeah.
We do send that information to them in the new resident package.
But, but again, as I understood it, they, they pull permits for other work that they had done.
That sounds like that's what she was saying.
Was that, was that correct?
But it goes to your logic though. Oh, this is already here. So this, this, so I could see the argument there.
Well, on, on that logic, I would say also beware because I know when I moved in my house, I had a water heater. And I needed a permit to get a new water heater. I had an air conditioner. I needed a permit for a new air conditioner. So the assumption should be anything that I do have that I need to either rebuild from the ground or whatever is necessary, the assumption should be these need permits. Everything needs a permit. Unless I have a reason to think, oh, no, there's no reason for a permit. I mean, that, I mean, the logic seems backwards that because something's there, I don't need a permit. Well, that's inherently not true. I mean, so that, and the village had to come out and inspect when the water heater got put in and when the-
But you just, you just hit upon, upon a very- But you just, you just hit upon, upon a very, uh, it may seem subtle, but it's really a significant point of the whole permit process. Part of the reason for this permit process is so that we can protect our citizens against bad work. You know, if it's, and when we go through the permit process with like your new air conditioner or whatever, when we come out to inspect it, part of our responsibility is to make sure it's done per code, that it's done properly, so that the citizen doesn't get damaged because the work was, was not what it should be. And it winds up costing them money and who knows what else. So that's the other side of this whole issue, what, why the permit process is, is the way, our mechanism for being able to protect our citizens when they're having work done. So it's, it becomes a double-edged sword, actually.
And I think to protect the value of the property. I mean.
And to protect the neighbors and it's, you know, infringements. Okay. So what do you guys think? Where, where is the thinking on this right now? Which way should we go?
Planning and zoning also addressed this, right? And, and they voted three to one to deny.
Is that, is that what happened, Bradford?
Yes, I believe that, that, that is what happened. Middy, you can confirm that if you would, please.
Middy, did you hear him?
Middy, can you confirm the three-one vote of planning and zoning board? Is it on there?
Yeah, it's on there. Yes.
It's on there.
Yes, that is true.
That's expectation. Okay.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Middy.
I believe it was my understanding on the last meeting that we had that, that the vote came down three to one because I didn't have letters. I didn't know that I could go get letters from my neighbors and supply that as part of the presentation. So that's what we did that after the last one.
So I understand what you just said is, uh, at that time when you went before PZ, you didn't have letters from your neighbors saying they supported it.
That's correct.
Which you now do have. And that, it was indicated earlier by Bradford that that information did come in, had come in later. So that could explain the thinking from the PZ. So, you, uh, have further comments?
No, but the idea of reaching out, though, and, and doing what we can do to, in addition to whatever about permitting just.
It's in the record. We have to do that. Any of you have any other thoughts? If not, I'll give you some of my thoughts on this. Whenever we have these type of variance requests, uh, there's always some rationale. There's always some scenario that how it came about. And, and, and that's, that's part of, of, of things that happen, I guess. But the bottom line for me has always been, is there, i- i- it's the no, it's the do no harm clause, all right? We want to not do any harm to our neighbors. And, um, when these requests come in, to me, part of the most overwhelming information and evidence is letters from the neighbors saying they're okay with this. It's not a concern. In this particular case, um, you know, it was a structure that was there, it was redone, and it was done differently. And it, you know, was raised and became in view of, I guess, our, our enforcement offices. So here we are. So I lean towards, uh, based on the feedback from the neighbors, that this is not an infringement on them and they're okay with it, I lean on granting the variance for that reason primarily. So with that, are you guys ready to take a vote? Jan, I'm sorry, did you say something? Who's talking?
He's getting feedback.
Is that the applicant speaking?
Jan is getting feedback, she said.
Oh, sorry. Did you want to say something, Jan? She said no. She gave me the no. All right, so if you, if members of council have no other comments, then I guess at this point I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion? We have a motion in a second from Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed? Okay, so Diane, please let the record show that the request for variance, uh, agenda item R1 was approved by a four-to-one vote. Thank you very much. And, and we will, we will move on more, as I said, more aggressively, getting the message out there.
Maybe make a statement now, so.
Well, the statement is clear that, um, you don't want to come in asking for these types of variances under the, with, with a scenario where you claim you didn't know that you had to get a permit for the work to be done. So that's, that's the message. Okay? Okay, with that, we'll move on to agenda item, regular agenda item R2, which is a public hearing to consider. Application number 2054, an application by Cutler and Herring, Inc., an adoption of resolution 20-13 confirming the council action. The applicant is seeking site plan modification approval and architectural approval. This is an interesting project, for the development of the new multipurpose building and mod, and modifications to the Village Hall complex located on approximately 16.5 acre parcel of land located on 1050 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. And this is a quasi-digital process, so I'll turn it over to you, Middy, to swear in participants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I believe Don's hearing is on. I see what you're muted and you're self-muted, um, and your architect from R E G. If you both could unmute yourselves. Thank you, sir. Is your architect also gonna be presenting tonight?
Uh, he's available for questions. If we get the council with any specific questions, he will be available to discuss.
Okay, I'll go ahead and swear you in then, and if he does, people swear him in then. Um, this is a part of the digital hearing. If you could, can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear in front of the show, the whole truth and everything about the truth?
I did it. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to the council and ask the very next participant to introduce his, 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 uh, regular agenda, agenda item two, that he has to disclose.
Yes, we're gonna turn it over to Chris Marsh, village engineer. Chris will introduce Don.
Do you want me to give my presentation first, or are we going directly to Don?
It's up to you, mayor. You want to go, you want to go hear Don's presentation first, or the planning director?
No, he should, Bradford do his.
Go ahead, Bradford.
I got the impression that he wasn't gonna do this, because he's not on screen.
We will put him, he's, he's ready to.
All right, so yeah, let's go through our normal process, Bradford.
And I'll, and I'll be brief and just kind of go over some of the things, how, how we evaluated this. I just first want to say that it's been a real pleasure to work with this property owner. Um, they've been.
Okay. Well, duly noted.
Um, the village is seeking a site plan modification approval for changes to the Village Hall complex, which includes a 25,380 square foot two-story village hall, reconfig, reconfiguration of the parking areas, building architecture and aesthetic approval, and landscape approval on a 16.5 acre piece of property. The site is situated in the public ownership zoning district and is located at the southeast corner of Okeechobee Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. In reviewing the petition, village staff considered conformity with the Village Royal Palm Beach's zoning code pertaining to the public ownership zoning district. Specifically, the proposed project meets the requirements of the public ownership zoning district as it relates to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, previous area, parking requirements.
Is he the control room?
No, he is... Yes, he is the control.
Oh, the Donald. Yeah, I see him.
Good everybody. Everyone can see it now. Okay, very good. Um, this is an illustration of the site. Uh, much of the site will remain unchanged. And new pedestrian access provided in the northeast corner of the site to Royal Palm Beach Boulevard and Okeechobee Boulevard. Um, there's been quite a significant reconfiguration of the parking and the drive aisles, which Don will go over in his present, presentation. Uh, the proposed site plan complies with all aspects of the village's landscape code. Um, here are some of the renderings of the, uh, building. The rear of the building and the sides. There will also be a reskinning of the sheriff's office, David B. Farber, um, trading center, and the current, uh, village council chambers to match those color schemes on the new building.
Does that include the color of the roof for, for this building?
Ray.
Yeah, yes, it will. We'll change the color of this roof to match the color of the other roofs.
Um, the planning and zoning commission, uh, voted and approved this application at their regular meeting, and we are recommending approval. I'll turn the floor back over to you, mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, then, um, Mr. Herring, you're on.
I continue the control of the state, and I will, uh, go ahead and choose by.
Just a minute, Don, we'll give you the, give you the screen here in a minute.
Bye. How much?
There you go. Okay, you're up.
Uh, um, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's, uh, it's a pleasure. I truly wish I could be there with you all person. Uh, it's a, a very exciting project, and it's really an honor to be able to participate. Uh, with me this evening is, uh, Mr. Rick Gonzalez, who's the architect, senior architect, and, uh, owner of R E G Architects. And, uh, we've had the pleasure to work with Rick, uh, really all over the state, on some wonderful, amazing projects that, uh, he's one of the most talented architects behind us. And in addition to being a great architect, he certainly appreciates place making. That's one of the things that we've been able to introduce into this project is place making. And so not only are we creating a, a new village, but we need to be the pollution of the village, we're also creating a place for the residents of the village to gather and to appreciate. So let me walk through, uh, our presentation. So, uh, uh, in addition to, uh, Cocker and Herring, uh, uh, I heard architect, our civil engineer is a community planning associate, uh, a landscape architect, or, uh, or Cocker and Herring. Uh, the site is, uh, is on the screen right now, hopefully you can see that. Uh, and, uh, pretty important to point out, I mean, you all are the builders. Probably one of the most significant pieces of the state, uh, western, uh, public town. Water, Okeechobee Boulevard, Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, uh, Gilbert Y, the citizens, uh, the city planners, who reserve a variable parcel where you can enable to aggregate, aggregate not only the city services, but the city, the fire department, the sheriff's department, and other public services off here on the site. So this is a tremendous asset, uh, that the, the city has, that's so. Planning this is a great responsibility, uh, to make sure it's planned properly for today, and for the future. Bradford pointed out, uh, this is a request for a site plan modification in existing two sets. The nominative is five, four, uh, a new village hall, but also it's just a part of the process. Look for the various parts to make sure that all, uh, the other sites, uh, improvements, even if you brought up the, uh, the current condition of being brought up, including the direction of finding it, a lot of the maintenance improvements and doing things, uh, make sure that this project is basically be able to provide for the next 40 years. I understand that the existing Village Hall building is 40, 40 years old. Next building needs to be at least another 40, uh, years. So the, uh, the existing building area, as you're aware, uh, is, uh, about 11,000 square meters with the council holders. It's about 40,750 square meters. And with the proposed expansion, the key thing to change this is it will be repurposed as a, uh, as a, uh, as a community building. Uh, but the new Village Hall will be 25,380 square meters. Let's talk a little bit more about what that is. This is a lot of, Village Hall is, we figure oddly enough, the, the amount of areas dedicated to employees, office space. It's really about, it's about the same, and that includes the growth of employees over the next 40 years. So, uh, it's designed to be more efficient, actually, a lot much smaller, more efficient. Got a lot more space that's been put into that area than the common ground. Some of the question issues related to the post office, really making a, a something that, uh, be suitable for long term. We've got plenty of parking over the site. Lots of open spaces, or 50% of the site still remaining open. Schedule, of course, is, is very important. Uh, these, uh, uh, projects take a lot of time. Uh, bring, uh, provisions, uh, and we'll get into it a little bit more, uh, which is, it's kind of just one thing. If there's two, two people do something, uh, because the, the public plan is a very careful device. Uh, provides for just the, the, uh, Village Hall, uh, for the, uh, for the employees. Uh, the new building is being constructed, uh, and then it provides a very logical perk. Uh, the new building, it avoids, it avoids a lot of downturns and it saves a lot of money. Uh, we anticipate the new Village Hall building to be completed by 2023. Now that seems like a long time, but, uh, we're already kept at 2020. Uh, and then when that's completed, the, uh, the existing Village Hall will be abolished. The spot area is for new ones, the city will be constructed, uh, and we anticipate final placement in 20, target 2023. Uh, we, we, there is a huge, uh, need to accelerate that, 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 that staff is, uh, really just making sure that we take care of and taking advantage of every one of, of those opportunities. How about you, uh, feel of, uh, of the benefits of new buildings versus the old? I'm not gonna ask you to leave this all tax on, on the, on this slide, and it's certainly the village, uh, the, uh, the scheme. Uh, the existing Village Hall, as you know, is 44 years old. So 40, 40, 44 years ago, we didn't even have the first computer. So, uh, that's a long, that's a long time. And so the new building will be built 21st century. Uh, and so some of the benefits, the design that we have, it's person that, uh, we think extended will be able to make fully operational during construction, eliminating a lot of the logistical issues, uh, and inefficiencies with relocation. Uh, and of course, uh, as our village manager will tell you, uh, as in most businesses, your, our staff and labor costs are probably one of the highest costs that we have to fill. So efficiency of the, of the village operation is imperative. This design incorporates that, which will be the hotter space clearing. Uh, so it will incorporate all of the tech, all of the connectivity that we need going into 21st century. It's critical. The, uh, new design provides for much more efficient, uh, workflow, uh, and customer service. Uh, and, and the square footage has been appropriately allocated as you're now, aware of now. If, uh, if Bradford or somebody from the police department needs to come over and talk to the city manager, uh, to help, get there, so certainly submit efficiency setting today. Uh, so the new plan, efficiency provided for this mission, provides for something that's become very, uh, uh, that's, I think, which is big indeed, and you're, you can talk about it. Many, uh, cities hope it's a lot of fire, like, in this state of the building, the city of understanding the issues that we have in the city level five, flooding. And this address is a higher priority. It's longer for efficient building and to stand, uh, the, uh, and, and it's very keen in, so, uh, if you have a form, it will have a form for privilege, and here, uh, the city can be able to provide for the key and continued services. More importantly, to your residents, the state expect, uh, to be full generator backup, uh, that you can, uh, operate for eight, four, in, uh, five. lights and power. And also, with the new facility, and existing facilities, it's going to be a much more efficient operating cost, everything, the hurricane rating, the building envelope will be much tighter, your air systems and that, air makeup and impact the outside will be much lighter, much more efficient, moving forward. So a number of enhancements have to be made as we work through the design development process. We can talk about that a little bit more. But first of all, we've been able to incorporate into council chambers and student chambers. And so why is that? Well, the council on your bill, it's, as, as, as presented, the lot of housing sales in the local area, all the western area, there's a community in strong, population growing. So this will be used to have four people, indoor stall, social distance, also with open ground, also in the, the area.
We got two years to get this squared away. Yeah, the next one is.
Call, which is designed with, designed, that we call it a street or barrier free, generally curbless, with very much of, so this is designed not only, not for all the people, but in, doing this wonderful piece of real estate that we have. And of course, this is, the new hall, purpose, well, I haven't had the opportunity, this is a cultural center, turns out wonderful. And as you know, over there, there's facilities all around the park. Those facilities could use for some very different things. And so that's those opportunities. So on the screen right now, I have the site plan. And all we want to get on that, and it's been really curious to see, to see, kind of working with, trying to maintain, to optimize the use of the, that's a cost issue, that we're able to do that, as well as incorporate the new, you can see, indoor side, the plaza area, and the new, the new, this, it's apparently different. It's called designed to help visualize how you're going to build a new village hall, existing village hall, in fact. So this, in it shows that, you can see, a lot of different rooms given, with your facilities, retain, parking areas that exist on the side of the building while you're building the building, and to be used for the employees, public, that will, pretty thoughtful, that, 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 I'll be focused a little bit now on the, on the plaza area, and so this, it's been very carefully, why we'll utilize this area for parking. It will also be available for events, in its curbless, or complete street. We will help that that's proposed, in that sense, we'll be incorporating some of the public spaces. And that's one thousand, it happens to be on the, with the, with council chambers, and possibly a couple of council that's out here, that we might not modify it, that's the same approach that we did out there, the, the, and the, you know, just things just together, as the development design became very fuel. In addition to the plaza area, you have to be able to connect for meeting areas for employees, as well as the public. And a few one might not think the same thing, but given the fact that the village has, works diligently, they can recruit and retain talent, hear the story of your twenty, your forty, but the semester, it's important to have spaces that, that they can utilize outside, particularly the upper generation, those are things that resonate with your employees. So your staff has been very, very thoughtful with things about the features, and this as well, of the plaza, the town area, this will, we came for a couple of places in it. And then the building itself, something really very, very simple design. It's not overly fabric, there's no marble, it's, it's simply done itself, and it's being painted. You've got the terraces, it's incorporated in the original, before about, what we refer to as a prairie style architecture, it's like the white, the guy, emphasis on the, the, it's very, very strong, it's just the vertical. And so it ties in very, very tight with the overall, overall, standing theme that will, that is, that's, it's important, it's on the longest routes, that you love, out there, in terms of hurricanes, winds, some of the ala, the elevation. Again, very, very strong rhythm with the architecture. And that's what I really appreciate is that I've worked with Rick so often on a number of wonderful projects. He has a great understanding of building proportions and business. So you can see, just by looking at the architecture, very natural proportion, the windows down for, the second floor, very carefully, of course, a lot of input from your staff. On the screen is the building, that was a poor plan. I really won't get into, get into a lot of detail, what plans that you have to talk to. But a couple things to point out, is that the village, the council chambers have been, really played, designed for that, it's, it's only large meeting, and we have that, to fill out as, as, that one's very, very intense, like that, I think, I meant to keep you see the amount of square footage, considering the next, the growth over the next forty years, like it's only about five hundred square feet, actual square footage is very, very close, more efficient, much more effective, it's a workflow, it's a communication wonder here, to the next. But there's a lot more, so in existing buildings today, it's about, you know, fifty percent of the space is dedicated to common area and, and dedicating to office. And so with this design, of course, I didn't, no one's counting, it's probably just a building, that goes from fifty fifty to about seventy percent, of, of, of thirty percent of the, of the state, seventy percent of the state is gone, to the common area. And that's important, because that is, that's the space, someone has, we have the post office here, when people from, during the busy season, the holidays, reasonable, and workforce, that's, that's, so again, here's another, I have a few, second floor, engineering, active, I can find it, it's pretty well done, properly with the, of different uses, very good. Also, we will be looking at upgrading your local spaces, existing facilities on the campus, and, so that the David Farber building, that's from which David is here, he just, he was appreciated. This everything is going to tie in with the new council chambers, landscaping, able to really work with the existing landscape, continue to have, some real fall, sure that we have shade, five four areas, meeting. We are able to take advantage of relocation, out of the large, those within the park lot. So those, people who are incorporated into your site, I think, goes forward with very complimentary, overall , uh, 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 will be, will be, if we're incorporating the home, the, uh, insulated stone, that's the whole road, so it's more like a pearl. And so we'll be incorporating that into the site. So the existing giant pole bike, we're also out to get this modified. And so it's, signs that, uh, uh, school larger, uh, we're also working with the public works department, uh, the cultural center. So some of the same findings, I guess, will have, uh, based on site, uh, like, there's a, major, a flood cap, uh, floodlot, I guess, printing everything off today. And with that, I think I've covered everything, uh, that we wanted to do. I didn't, just take too much time, but certainly, and our team is here to answer questions they have.
You want to cut?
Yeah, I do. The bad news is, the telephone line through the console made it very difficult to hear that in this room. Everybody else has heard his presentation just fine. Everybody outside, everybody on the computer out there heard his presentation very clearly. Just the one thing that, that, that he added to this, that, that in his conversation, that was not necessarily on his slides, and I think it's important, when you, when you look at what we're building, when I saw his, the slide in the very beginning that summarized the square footage, and it, and it shows Village Hall currently just under twelve thousand square feet, with three thousand square foot of chambers here, and then it shows the new Village Hall at twenty-five thousand three hundred. It looks like that we're more than doubling the size of the space. And while that is a true statement, the interesting thing is, when we went through the needs assessment with, with staff and what we needed, the offices are actually smaller. The new building, we broke up in a couple different areas. There's, there's significantly more public space as far as the lobby, the post office area, the stacking for the post office area, the lobbies in each of the departments when you come out of the main lobby. And let me just, let me just give you some numbers to, to, to show you how, how this works. Our current office space is just under six thousand square feet, around fifty-eight hundred sixty-two square feet. Our new office space in the new building is five hundred square feet less than that. It's fifty-three hundred and sixty-seven. We actually have less office space for the existing employees of Village Hall in the new building.
But we will have additional space for growth.
We do have additional space, but not, not, not a lot. We do have fourteen hundred square feet of additional space for growth. And then the, the rest of the eighteen thousand square feet of new space is, is common space and open space, that we, we currently have fifty-eight hundred square feet of, of shared common space in the existing Village Hall. The new building goes to eighteen thousand. So that's where the additional space goes. It goes to public space, shared space in the new building. It, it, as Don said in his presentation, it's, it's laid out that where you walk into that main lobby, you have all, all the departments that you, that you, that deal directly with the, with the, the public is right there on the first floor, and you can look in any four of the directions and, and, and go with, you know, and then upstairs, what we did is we have the, more the internal departments, the finance department, the IS department, engineering, and, and that's how it's, it's laid out. But I wanted to explain that space, because when you look at the square footage, it's, it might be a little bit deceiving that we're building a lot more space. When we went through the needs assessment, I was actually a little worried that we weren't, that the department heads were not responding with need enough space. But, you know, part of the mindset is, is office space going forward, there's not going to be as great of a demand. We're going to be more efficient, and we're going to continue to use automation for efficiency. People are going to continue to do more work online. And while we did program, you know, fourteen percent, about, about twenty percent additional space for future.
All right, so you gotta repeat everything you said, no?
So the telephone line's not only not working with the voice coming in, it's not working, or a voice going out. And that, and, and what that problem is, is our console right here, that we've been, had a strong desire to, to continue these meetings, broadcasting them live on channel eighteen and, and YouTube. What we realized tonight after the second meeting working this way, that we cannot accomplish that goal and use that console. So if we're all using computers, the voices are fine, but going through this is not working. So we'll, we'll have to.
Make an adjustment.
Well, we'll do, we'll have to record the meeting and play it at a later date.
So, okay. Playing it a later date, though, can it be played like on a ten second delay?
That's a good question.
I was, I was speaking with Marina maybe about ten minutes ago, and it would be almost immediate, where it would be recorded, and then.
And then, yeah, then it, then it gets re, re-broadcast, right. It's, it's still different than a baseball game. We don't see the strike until about six seconds later, so.
The good news is Chris Marsh and the others I checked with on my phone that are listening to Don through, are, are, we're hearing the presentation clearly. We just weren't hearing it clearly through our console and through our speakers here in this, in this council chamber. So I, I know that it was difficult to hear Don, and what he had said that was not on those slides was kind of that, that, that we have eleven thousand, of that eleven thousand, about half is public common space, half is office space. We're going to twenty-five thousand. In that twenty-five thousand, almost seventy-three percent, seventy percent is public common space. Office space actually went down.
Okay.
Eight percent.
There's one thing I, I don't think he mentioned. I didn't see, see it in the, in the presentation, unless I missed it. I think one of the other important benefits we get is we also get to use this facility as an E O C.
Yeah, he said.
He did say it, okay.
In the very beginning.
Okay, all right, that's good. Just wanted to make sure you didn't.
And what's important about that is the continuation of service and, and right after the storm. What we do now is we, we basically close down the existing Village Hall. We go to the David B. Farber Center. We set everything up in there. And we actually set ourselves up to be able to give building permits out of, out of that. If Village Hall is still here after storms, and we don't have to give building permits out, out of the, the David B. Farber, then we have, we have to take about at least a half a day, almost as much of the day, move everything back over and then open up the business there. This gets rid of that delay. So we think that's a big advantage. I think having a Village Hall after a store of significant storm, more so than what would, this building would last through, we think is a very positive thing, too.
Actually, and Don, thank you very much for the presentation. It's always great to have you in chambers or virtual, whichever. To the, to your point, Mr. Manager, when you were talking about the difference in the square footage, and to the Mayor's point about enough space, what's interesting, though, is I believe that we do have space that can be converted. So we do have more public space, but then there is the opportunity to convert for as our needs change as well.
Yes. What we did is we, while we planned for about twenty percent new office space, or about twenty percent, or actually about twelve percent if you take, if you don't take the reduction. What we did is we designed the count, the three thousand square foot council chambers, where that could be in the future, if needed, could be divided into two floors instead of the one floor that it's originally being designed, and have offices on both of them. That is going to, that's, I know Don said this is a forty, fifty year building. That has to be at least year twenty twenty-five out there, beyond a lot of our time. But that, it does, it is designed with that capability, and then, and then we moved the council chambers back over to this space.
Fifty years, okay. Listen, what, what, eighty-five years?
Yeah.
Listen, one of the phenomenons we're seeing that the economists are beginning to look at is one of the outgrowths of this pandemic era we're in, will be, many companies will be using less physical office space, because they will be using a higher number of people working from home, because they're finding out they've gotten great productivity with people having to work from home. And why pay for office space if you don't need it, you know, for every person? So it's, it's an interesting transition, I think we're headed for. Okay, thanks, Don. We appreciate the presentation. What I want to do now What I want to do now is address the question of public comment. Do we have any advanced public comments on this particular agenda item R2?
No public comment on this agenda item.
Okay. Ray, do we have anyone out there with their hand raised?
Uh, I just, I just sent a job message to residents that are out there, asking if they want to comment. They got upgraded panels, so their hand raised, but I don't turn anything back. Um, let me turn their, let me turn their, their phone on, if I can find it, I had it right there. Okay, where'd it go? Where's the residence one, did they, did they hang up? Did we, did you turn, did you find him, did you turn him back on? There were two people that were listed as residents in there. They're not, they're not on now. No, I. I do not have anybody.
Okay, so we have no requests for public comment from anyone who's on the, the, uh, the virtual meeting right now. For agenda item R2.
That is correct, I do not have.
And I have no public comment card submitted, so therefore there is no further public comment for this agenda item R2. So I'm going to close public comment for agenda item R2 and move to council comments. Who was up first? Jan, you up? No, no comment, okay. Any other comments for members on council? No?
No.
All right, before I call for a motion, I just want to add a couple of thoughts. I, I know that some quarters or questions, maybe from citizens and people in general, have asked, they have a, the question mark in their mind is, with, with all that's going on with the COVID-19 pandemic uh, impacts on, on budgets, uh, for municipalities, why would we now choose to go forward with this project? And what I want to explain to everyone is, first of all, the funding for this capital improvement project comes from a completely different set of, 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 uh, resources than the funding that we use uh, and that we receive to operate the village. So one has nothing to do with the other. In fact, um, these funds that we're earmarking for this project can only be, we can't transfer these funds over into our operational world. They have to be spent for capital improvement type projects. Uh, they, they cannot be spent for other operational things that we may need. So they're completely different set of funds. And here's a real important issue, these funds have a lifespan to them, they're not just going to be there forever. Um, they can go away if they're not used. Uh, so the funds are there, they are available, and now is the time to do this project. And this could be perhaps, given the COVID, uh, environment we're in and the impact on our marketplace, this could be the most important reason. Uh, local governments across the country and even within our county are moving and trying to advance these capital projects because what it will result in, it will result in creating job opportunities in our marketplace. And we know we need to have new job opportunities available in our marketplace. So this is one way that local government can help the community and help, um, us get back to a, a more robust, uh, um, economy than we, that we were experiencing before this, this happened. So those, those are some of the cogent reasons why it's important that we do this project now, and it's important that we take advantage of the funding that are available, and it's important that we're going to be putting contracts into the marketplace that will create jobs for people. So I just wanted to share that. And with that, if there are other comments for members on council, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number two.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that this very important project, agenda item R2, was approved 5-0. And, and thanks, you Bradford, for, for working with this, with, with this applicant so nicely. Okay, all right, moving right along, huh? I'm sorry. Okay, moving right along, agenda item, regular agenda item R3, is a public hearing to consider application 20-14, an application by Evans Land Consulting, an adoption of resolution 20-12, con failure meaning the council's action. App can is seeking preliminary plot approval for four parcels of land totaling approximately 3.3, 33.748 acres, located on the south side of Acme Road, west of State Road 7. Um, and with that, I guess, you're on Bradford.
Great, thank you. Um, we're waiting for Don to stop sharing his screen. That way Ray then can give me control. And is everybody able to see my screen?
Yes.
Very good. This is an application for preliminary, preliminary plot approval for four parcels of land totaling 33.78 acres, located on the south side of the Acme Road and west of State Road 7. The site has a land east designation of single family and a zoning designation of single family residential RS3. Village Council grabbed site plan approval for Pod 4 on July, um, 2019 through approval of resolution 1917. The preliminary plot is consistent with the approved site plan. Furthermore, the plot performs the planning requirements of Village Code, more specifically section 2222 and section 26-80, Brens 4. Here's a illustration of the preliminary plot, and as you can see, um, it does conform to the approved site plan, and again, the eastern portion of this plot. Plan and zoning commission considered the application on June 23rd, 2020, recommended approval by vote of four to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you Bradford. Does the applicant want to make a presentation at this time? I can't hear you.
I think what he said was Bradford's presentation was adequate.
Is that what he said? Okay, we'll go with that.
Well done.
Okay, we'll go with Bradford's excuse, with his, with his comments, uh, on record. Um, having said that, we'll check now for public comments. Diane, do we have any advanced comments on this agenda item R3?
No public comment on this agenda item.
Ray, do we have anyone with their hand raised who wants, who's on the, who's on the, uh, meeting who wants to comment?
No, I do not have anybody.
Okay, um, I do not have any public comments, uh, cards physically submitted here at the, at the council chamber. So with that, I will be closing public comment on agenda item R3 and open up for comments for members on council. No comments? If there are no comments, then I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R3 was approved 5-0. Agenda item R4 is a public hearing to consider application number 19-13, 137, an application by Lennar Holmes. The applicant is seeking architectural approval for 10 additional houses, housing models, for the Crestwood North Residential Plan Unit, uh, PUD, located at the northwest quadrant of Crestwood Boulevard in the M1 canal. And with this being a quasi judicial process, I will ask, uh, many to swear in, those who want to be sworn in. Yes, I did have a meeting with, uh, with the client, with the applicant, where they reviewed the project with me.
Likewise.
I also had a conversation with the applicant and the village manager.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Um, the applicant is seeking architectural approval for 10 new model home designs with the introduction of a shingle roof option. The 10 new roof models are proposed to be designed in the Spanish Mediterranean architectural style. Village is not in support of the introduction of a shingle roof option since this option is not part of the original proposed architectural style upon the sale of property to Lennar and the original approval by the Plan and Zoning Commission, and goes against the architectural style to what those individuals, um, who live in this community have already bought homes in the neighborhood. Um, on these next few slides, this is, will, this will give you, um, kind of a taste of what they're proposing as far as the architectural style, um, minus the roof.
Bradford, those are the 10 models that they're asking for to change, is that correct?
It's a, um, it's a sample size of them. Some of the ones, I, I included the stone on the front face of the, um, home, and then some I, I didn't include.
But it's the roof that they're asking for the.
They're asking for these 10 new models, and then the inclusion of a shingle roof as an option.
Okay, thanks.
Village staff is recommending approval in part and denial of part of this application. Village staff is recommending approval of the proposed architectural changes for the additional 10, um, model, or the 10 home models. However, village staff has recommended denial of the inclusion of the shingle roof off, option. Staff believes that the shingle roof option is not consistent with the currently approved architecture and runs contrary to the original architectural style that was approved by the Plan and Zoning Commission and Village Council. Um, village staff has received 49 letters, um, to whenever I counted them, um, of objection to the architectural change to allow the shingle roofs. And again, staff is recommending, um, approval of the architectural changes with the exclusion of the shingle roof option. The Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this application by a vote of four to zero. With that being their, uh, with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Just a question on, did you get any notion of what, what the sense of the, uh, P&amp;Z approval was really based on?
Um, it, they didn't think that shingle roofs were that egregious.
Really?
Well, they may live in neighborhoods like at my neighborhood where shingle roofs are and were an option uh, at inception of the development.
You just said the key word, though, at the exception of that development, that was the, that was what they were putting in place. Not midstream. Okay. Okay, with that, as, as reported by, by Bradford, there are some 49 letters, I guess, sent in, okay. Okay, with that, I guess the, we got the letters as advanced public, uh, uh, comments. So with that, can you proceed with entering this information into the, into the record and sharing with us?
Yes, Mayor, I have received 49 public comments for this agenda item, which I'll now read into the record. Our community of Valacera just found out that the builder is submitting plans for new models. The models really do not fit our already Mediterranean look, but most importantly, they are offering shingle roofing. I oppose this choice of roofing because of the aesthetics. While the builder is probably trying to lower the cost of materials, this will cheapen the look of the community and bring down the value of the neighborhood. Please consider my opinion when moving to vote on this. Kind thanks, Don Hernagi, 3214, Dunning Drive. I am a homeowner resident at Valacera. While I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval, I am not at all happy with the fact that some of the, some of these designs will be with shingle roofs. Currently, Valacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations, and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as well, and as a result, will bring our overall, overall value down. Not to mention that this, that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if this cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, we will more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new home, homes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this our last stop and settling down. I feel lied to enough with Lennar from the beginning about how our clubhouse will be finished before the end of 2019. The clubhouse is sitting there collecting cobwebs. The front gate is collecting cobwebs, letting all non-residents come in freely. There is no safety to our neighborhood. This should be a class action lawsuit against Lennar. Because of this, I can sadly tell you that a majority of the neighbors no longer want to live here anymore. The city of Royal Palm Beach has done very little to us newcomers to make us feel safe. We are being targeted, our gates are being broken into when we spend our money to buy locks to prevent break-ins. I am a first-time homeowner, and we spent so many man-hours and money to buy our dream home. This is no longer a dream home, this is a nightmare, and I wish I never ever came to Royal Palm Beach. How on earth could you let such a corrupt builder, a corrupt building company ruin your village? I promise you, you will lose many residents because of what they have done, and you will continue to let, and you continue to let do. I am writing to ask that the council not approve the mismatch and cheapening and corrupting our neighborhood. Thank you. Gary and Lindsay Gatz, 3136 Strange Lane. I'm a homeowner resident in Valacera. I have been informed that there are now new proposed designs of homes that have been submitted for approval. Although I'm okay with new models with the community, I am not in agreement of the designs that include shingle roofs. We bought one of the first homes built here in Valacera, and one of the reasons was for the style of the home. All the homes' models that have since been built are a modern Mediterranean style with tile roof. Going forward, if some of the homes have shingle roofs, we do not believe this will cheap, we do believe this will cheapen the look of our neighborhood as well as bring down the value of our home. This mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. With this said, I am writing to ask that the council not approve the shingle roof proposal. Thank you, Samantha Whitaker, 1112, Brindley Place. I'm a resident of Valacera community, and my house located at 3207 Clay's Court. When I purchased my home from Lennar, I received assurances from Lennar that this is going to be a great community. Lennar will build nice houses and do not compromise in quality and type of houses that they will build in this community. We all residents received assurances that builder will not build cheap houses or houses with shingled roofs. We all, we, that's the way it's written. We all residents received assurances from Lennar that all houses in community will definitely will have roof tile. I am a resident of this community, disagree and object to Lennar, Lennar's request to build model homes in this community with shingle roof. I request the village do not approve model homes with shingle roof and make sure that Lennar build models with roof tile in this community. Sincerely, Baram Sharkan. My name is Houstonia, and I live at the Valacera community. Concern was brought to my attention, the subject above noted shingle roof proposal for new future development is a major concern. My family and myself invested in this community for various reasons, including future investment opportunities, new community, and the style of the homes. Roofing was a major part of the aesthetic, aesthetics that appealed to us and still does. It made Valacera what it is today. If stated proposal above is approved, I believe that it would be a disservice to the current and future residents of Valacera. In truth, we the homeowners are the ones that it will affect the most because it is our investment, community, and desired style. Please allow our voices to be heard and understand from the perspective of homeowners who have interest in Valacera, not only financially but personally. This is our home, and we would appreciate it if our voices were heard. Thank you kindly, Houstonia S. Agreed. I am a homeowner, homeowner resident at Valacera community. My wife and I are very affected and upset by the decision Lennar has made to build new homes with shingle roofs,
which would in fact, which would affect not only the community having a proper mixture of houses and causing a devaluation of our beautiful houses, which we acquired with so much sacrifice personally. I think that it's inappropriate and a decision in bad taste, which will cause damages to all the owners of the community. I hope that we take into account this request not to build houses of low material level, what would lower the values of our properties. The mixture of houses would lower the prices and the quality of construction in the village of Royal Palm Beach. I reiterate to the council that you please disapprove this request for a mix of quality homes in our neighborhood to this day, to this day look the same in quality, construction and prices. Thank you. And Mondo and Luz Menino, three-three-two-five, Brinley Place. I'm a homeowner resident at Balacera. While I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval, I am not happy at all with the fact that some of the designs will be shingle roofs. One of the main reasons I purchased my home in Balacera is because of the fact that all homes were planned to be made with tile roofs, improving the appearance and value of the community. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen and degrade the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, I will be selling my house immediately as I have no interest in a community that is clearly going to decline and degrade in value and appearance, appearance. I am writing to ask that the council not approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you. Adrian Valder, Valveras, three-two-one-nine, Clay's Court. I'm a homeowner resident of Balacera. While I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval and not at all happy with the fact that some of the designs will be with shingle roofs. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring an overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheap looking shingles get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this our last stop and settling down. I am writing to ask that the council not approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you. In best regards, Nunzio and Virginia Soshi, three-three-one-three, Brinley Place. I'm a homeowner in Balacera and has been brought to my attention that the new home models were submitted for approval within our community. While I do think that the new design options are great, I am concerned with the shingle roofs will change the look of the community and the homes we have here in Balacera. My wife and I purchased our very first home here and we're planning to stay awhile. Currently, we have Mediterranean style roofs on all of the, all of our hu- all of the homes. It would be a shame to have our investment diminished and value brought down due to the mismatch of the community with an approved, with the approval of these new designs. I am writing to ask the council to not approve the shingled roofs and protect our investment in this beautiful Royal Palm Beach community. Thanks in advance. Azel, Azel Shay, three-two-three-two, Clay's Court. I'm a homeowner resident of Balacera. While I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval, I'm not happy with the fact that some of the designs will be with shingle roofs. Currently, Balacera has a beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all the tile roofs, these tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring an, our overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these che- cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this our last stop and settling down. I am writing to ask that the council not approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you. Santiago Qualler, three-two-oh-one, Dunning Drive. I'm a homeowner resident of Balacera. I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval and I'm not at all happy with the fact that some of the designs will be shingle roofs. One of the main reasons I purchased my home in Balacera is because of the fact that all homes were planned to be made with tile roofs, improving the appearance and values of the community. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to single roofs will absolutely cheapen and degrade the look of our community and as a result will bring an overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper, cheaper looking shingle roofs get approves- approved, I will be selling my house immediately as I have no interest in a community that is clearly going to decline and degrade in value and appearance. I am writing to ask that the council not approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you. Adrian Valdeparis, three-two-one-nine, Clay's Court. Homeowner and resident of Balacera, I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval. I am not at all happy with the fact that some of the designs will be with shingle roofs. One of the main reasons I purchased my home in Balacera is because of the fact that all homes were planned to be made with tile roofs, improving the appearance and value of the community. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen and degrade the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall value down. Not to mention the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingles get approved, I will be selling my house immediately as I have no interest in a community that is clearly going to decline and degrade in value and appearance. I am writing to ask the council not to approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you. Demaryius Valdeparis, three-two-one-nine, Clay's Court. I'm a homeowner resident of Balacera. While I'm happy to see additional designs of the new homes submitted for approval, I'm not happy at all with the fact that some of the designs will be with shingle roofs. Unacceptable. Currently, Balacera has a beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevation, all with tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingles get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame. I'm writing to request that the council do not approve the roof mismatch, therefore cheapening the value of our homes in the neighborhood. Thank you. Sol Pearson, one-one-zero-one, Brinley Place. Hello, I am writing this to voice my opinion about the proposed plan for the new model homes in Balacera. I purchased a home in Balacera last year and have long, have loved living here. However, this was a big investment for us and hearing that the fu- that there are future plans to use shingles instead of tiles for the roof in the new models is unacceptable to me. Paid good money to live in this community and mismatched houses made with cheaper material with that would definitely make me rethink my investment here. I urge you to please vote against this proposed plan. Thank you. Claire Ford, three-three-two-seven, Brinley Place. I'm a homeowner resident of Balacera. I'm very concerned with the fact that some of the designs submitted to approve by the Lennar will be with shingle roofs. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all the tile roofs, these tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this out, making this out last stop and settling down. I am writing to beg that the council not approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you. Alfranza Alfredo Fonseca, three-three-oh-seven, Brinley Place. Royal Palm Beach mayor and board, I was first to buy in Balacera back in two thousand seventeen and have the, have the included features paperwork stating that the homes will have Spanish-style concrete roof tile. I'm in favor of the new models, but only if they have concrete roof tiles. To now change to shingle roofs would destroy the look of the community over, after over a hundred fifty homes built and lower our value home, our home values. I'm very disappointed in Lennar for even trying to do this. We still have no working entrance, security gate and no clubhouse. That is a long way from finished. I hope you will consider my concerns on this matter. Frederick Fisher, three-two-oh-three, Clay's Court. I'm a homeowner resident at Balacera. While I'm happy to see additional designs of hu- new homes submitted for approval, I'm not happy with the fact that some of the designs will be shingle roofs. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will abs- will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall, overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. And to have family, the construction business, I know what this means. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property values, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this out our last stop and settling down. We do not have enough, we do have had enough with the changes already made in the models. It's not what Lennar told us when we first purchased here. I feel we have been lied to and disrespected and it's now, I do not believe that Lennar should be making affordable homes because at the end, that is why they are trying to do. We all moved here because we thought it was a good idea, good area, good neighborhood. With these changes, I'm not sure, so sure anymore. If this gets approved, I just need time to sell my house. I'm not staying in this community and trust me, there are more people than that, there are more people that think the same way. Now, I do regret moving from a wonderful place to here. I am writing to ask the council not approve this miss- the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Regards, Jao Kular, three-two-oh-one, Dunning Drive. Good afternoon, it's been brought to my attention to several homeowners that Lennar is attempting to alter their original architectural plans. Those who purchased homes in Balacera did so with the belief of a standard of excellence and taste that would hold the value of our homes. I vehemently oppose any alteration to the original plans to the Balacera development roofs and find it more than disappointing that Lennar would try to cheapen a community by adding a different and cheaper roof than those already built to standard. I thank you, the village council and the village manager, for always having the best interests of residents in mind when making such critical decisions. May y'all stay safe and stay healthy. Very truly yours, Diane Smith.
I am a homeowner resident in Balacera. While I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval, I'm not at all happy with the fact that some of the designs will be shingle roofs. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this our last stop and settling down. I am writing to ask that council not approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you. Sharon Rose Samuels, three-two-one-oh, three-two-one-oh, Clay's Court.
To whom it may concern, my name is Monica Stolowicz and I'm a homeowner and resident of Balacera. Wanted to express my complete disapproval or dislike of the request by Lennar to be able to change the new models of homes to have shingle roofs. As a homeowner, one of the reasons moving here was the quality of homes that were there. As time has gone by, Lennar has changed the style of homes to lower value of building construction such as changing the type of windows, types of roofs and manufacturers to save money, but that means lower quality of homes. It would be completely different more, it would be completely different more than it is now to bring shingle roofs. Associations are meant to have a flow of uniformity and the shingle roofs would completely defeat that purpose and completely lower the value of current homes and for the current owner to be very unhappy with our investment. I am asking you to please, please review the situation and please think of what it, of it as what if this was your home and neighborhood that you have put all your savings into. Thank you for your time. Monica Stolowicz, three-two-three-four, Dunning Drive.
I am Prith Farah Shamala, a homeowner and resident of Balacera community. Balacera is beautiful new community with nice designs with tile roofs. I'm happy that Lennar is adding new models, but concerned and not happy at the same time knowing that these models will be having shingle roofs. This mismatch may also impact our investment, me and my family made in Royal Palm Beach because I believe a cheap shingle roof look will bring down the value of homes, including mine, which have tile roofs. I am writing to council to ask not to approve these mo- models with shingle roofs. Thank you. Prith Farah Shamala, three-two-one-two, Dunning Drive. I am writing in regard to application nineteen-one thirty-six, seven. I'm strongly opposed to Lennar homes proposing models with shingle roofs instead of tile roofs. Please do not allow them to do this. I spent all my hard-earned money searching for a nice community that is upscale and now for Lamar, now for Lennar to go, to now go cheap and want to do shingle roofs is going to make the value of our homes decrease. That would horri- that would horrible for me and our community. I would greatly appreciate your under- I would greatly appreciate your understanding to this matter. Best regards, Stacy Valdez, one-one-zero-eight, Brinley Place. I'm a homeowner resident of Balacera. I'm so ha- I am so happy that I am seeing that additional designs of new homes submitted for approval. However, I'm not happy with the fact that some of the designs will be with shingle roofs. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. The tile roofs add beauty to the neighborhood and facade of the houses. Therefore, changing the look of the tiles to shingle roofs will diminish our investment. I'm writing to ask the council to approve, I'm writing to ask the council to approve the mismatch and cheapening the look of our community. Thanks and stay safe. I am a homeowner in Balacera and has been brought to my attention that the new home models were submitted for approval within our community. While I do think the new design options are great, I am concerned that the shingle roofs will cheapen the look of the community and the homes we have here in Balacera. Currently, we have Mediterranean style, style tile roofs on all of the homes. It would be a shame to have our investment diminished and value brought down due to the mismatch throughout the community with the approval of these new designs. I am writing to ask the council to not approve the shingled roofs and protect our investment in this beautiful Royal Palm Beach community. Thank you, Diane Razzo, three-two-three-two, Clay's Court. I'm a homeowner resident of Balacera. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, the application from Lennar is requesting switching to shingle roofs, which will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new home comes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this our last stop and settling down. I am writing to ask that the council not approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you. Cassandra Plos, um, one-three-two-zero-five, Clay's Court. I'm a home, homeowner and resident of Balacera. It comes to, it has come to the homeowner's attention that Lennar has an application in place to approve shingle roofs on future designs for new homes. While it is advantageous to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval, it is disheartening to see the builder, Lennar, reduce the value of our neighborhood by choosing cheaper material than originally designed for this type of neighborhood. Most of my family has lived in Royal Palm Beach and its local surroundings for many years. My husband and I lived here more than twenty years ago and we were, and we were relocated to Connecticut with a big Pratt and Whitney move. About two years ago, we were given the opportunity to move back to Florida again and we chose the village of Royal Palm Beach once more because of this new beautiful community named Balacera that offered upscale, smart homes and promoted the use of quality products that would keep the neighborhood looking beautiful for many years. Currently, Balacera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall value down. This mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the village of Royal Palm Beach. In addition, the longevity of a sh- shingle roof is twenty to, ten to twenty years while a barrel tile roof should last forty to fifty years. Using barrel tile roofs will clearly add to the beauty and keep, and upkeeping of our community for many more years to come than using shingle roofs. I strongly urge the council to not approve the shing- use of shingles in the development of Balacera and Royal Palm Beach. By doing so, you will maintain property, you will, you will maintain property values at a competitive level with neighboring towns such as Palm Beach Gardens and Wellington, as well as neighboring communities of Madison Green. Your disapproval of this application benefits not only the Balacera residents, but the whole town of Royal Palm Beach as well. Please take this into consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration. It's an important issue in advance. I look forward to attending the meeting that will take place on July sixteenth in which you, the council, will make this very important decision. Best regard to Mesa Raver, fourteen-oh-two, Wickcomb Drive.
I, I have been a homeowner and resident of Balacera for over a year, over a year and one and I have selected this community primarily because of the beautiful and modern-looking quality homes in this complex. An important aspect of the modern-looking home-
An important aspect of the modern looking homes is the beautiful tile roofs which can be seen inside and out this, outside this development. It has come to my attention recently that Lennar has an, has an application in place, to approve shingle roofs on future designs for new homes. I am writing this letter to Royal Palm Beach Council to express my adamant opposition to shingle roofs, shingle roofs in this community. It is understanding and it is understandable that designs of the new homes change and evolve over time and these designs need to be submitted for approval. It is extremely disappointing to see the builder, Lennar, completely debase their product and bait and switch the existing customers by effectively selling houses with the appearance of implication of a complete community of tile roof houses then switch over to shingle roof homes after selling many homes with the tile roof concept. This request will obviously reduce the value of our neighborhood by accepting a low value option. It will also reflect low integrity of the council to allow the base quality of the homes in this development after salespeople for Lennar represented a community of tile roof homes. Our choice to live in the Village of Royal Palm Beach was primarily because of this new beautiful community that offered upscale tile roofs on all homes and promoted the use of high quality products that would keep the neighborhood looking beautiful for many years to come. Currently, Vallesera has beautiful and modern tile roofs. These tile roofs are the most important characteristic of the beauty of the design. Any concept in South Florida of switching to shingle roofs would clearly cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall value of our existing properties down. A resulting mismatch will be extremely unsettling. It will clearly diminish our investment and the association and the associated tax base for the Village of Royal Palm Beach. In addition, the longevity of the shingle roof is 10 to 20 years while barrel tile roof should last 40 to 50 years. Using barrel tile and other tile roofs will clearly add to the beauty, safety, and community of our homes for many more years than using shingle roofs. I adamantly oppose any approval of the use of shingle roofs in Vallesera. Your disapproval of this application will clearly show the integrity of this council to uphold the standards intended for the Vallesera residents. These, these high standards will be positive reflections of the town of Royal Palm Beach as well. Please take this request into serious consideration. I deeply appreciate your time and consideration of this important issue. I and many members of this community look forward to participating in the meeting, meeting currently scheduled for July 16th in which you will make this critical decision for the future of the valued community. Bernard Raver, 1402 Whitcomb Drive.
To whom it may concern, I'm a homeowner and resident of Vallesera. While I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval, I'm not at all happy with the fact that some of the designs will be shingle roofs. Currently, Vallesera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this our last stop and settling down. I am writing to ask the council not approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you, Yagunda Ravel, 3310 Brinley Place. I am concerned, resident in Vallesera, like many other, others, I am concerned with the depreciation or devaluing our community with their proposed shingle roof, roofing. I believe that residents of this community deserve and hold the right to be afforded the community that was presented to them at the time of purchase. Plans should not be changed midstream and doing so, Lennar continues with its reputation of deception and should not be allowed to get away with it. The city of Royal Palm Beach needs to hold builders such as Lennar to a higher standard and owes that much to its residents. As a resident of Royal Palm Beach, I implore you, please do not approve the shingle roofs planned for this Vallesera community. The approval of this plan would be extremely unfair to the current residents who have paid over $400,000 for their homes as this will devalue our community. This will no doubt have a long-term effect on the city of Royal Palm Beach. Royal Palm City, please be an advocate for your residents. Like others, if this plan is approved, I will also have to consider selling my home, relocating to another city. Sincerely concerned, homeowner. As one of the first residents in this community, I can recall how impossible it was to negotiate with Lennar to obtain changes to the options that Lennar published in their sales brochure. If anyone wanted, one of Lennar's, one of Lennar offered house exterior paints, that was okay, but to obtain that color, you were forced to have the trim, the door paint, the roof tiles to be exactly what Lennar packaged together. Absolutely no accommodation changes were allowed. The community was advertised to include features such as Spanish tile concrete roof tiles as part of the design and the houses were priced accordingly, taking into account, taking into account such tiles in this supposedly upscale, upscale community. Now it is my understanding that Lennar wants to obtain your approval to build homes with shingle roofs as lower price options. In my opinion, this would reduce the home values and change that advertised promise to these existing homeowners of having a Spanish style look. You should refuse their request as being a bait and switch tactic. It is unfair to the current owners and would result in a mixed match development style. Bait to get the first set of homeowners to buy based on Lennar's promise and after the purchase to do a switch to satisfy, to satisfy Lennar's own financial interests. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter. Beverly Newman.
Just wanted to let you know that I own a house in Vallesera community and would like, and we would not like the idea about building new homes, changing the actual roofing design to shingles. I believe this could potentially affect not only the overall appearance of the community but also the value of our homes. From the investment point of view, this would be certainly negative, especially when I, when I, this is my primary residence and where I expect to establish myself and my family for many years to come. I really hope that Lennar is willing to consider the opinions of all neighbors around Vallesera that feel the same way as I. To really think about some other options or simply keep the same design that you used until now. Best regards, Rafael Calmeras, 3235 Dunning Drive.
My name is Daniel Hernandez and I bought a house in Vallesera in 2018. It has come to my attention that Lennar has submitted new home designs for approval from the city and some of the designs will be shingle roofs, which has brought concern to the community. The purpose of this email is to ask the council to not approve the new roof designs. The existing houses in Vallesera all have tile roofs, which add beauty to design and community as a whole. The new shingle roofs will depreciate the appearance of our community and devalue the price of the houses of the current neighbors, hindering the investment we have made in Royal Palm Beach. It is highly likely that I will remove my investment from the Village of Royal Palm Beach if it, if it approves the change to shingle roofs and the pricing of my home goes down as a result. I ask the council to deny the approval of these new designs, including shingle roofs in the community. Best regard, Daniel Hernandez, 1104 Brinley Place. I'm a homeowner in Vallesera and it's been brought to my attention that the new home models were submitted for approval within our community. While I do think the new design options are great, I am concerned with the shingle roofs would, will cheapen the look of the community and the homes we have here in Vallesera. My husband and I purchased our very first home here and we were planning to stay a while. Currently, we have Mediterranean style tile roofs on all the homes. It would be a shame to have our investment diminished and value brought down to the mismatch throughout the community with the approval of these new designs. I am writing to ask the council to not approve the shingle roofs and protect our investment in this beautiful Royal Palm Beach community. Thanks in advance, Daniel Shea, 3232 Clay's Court. Getting there. And a homeowner and resident in Vallesera.
Hang in there Diane.
Pardon me?
Hang in there.
I am, we're almost ten more. While I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval, I am not at all happy with the fact that some of the designs will be shingle roofs. Currently, Vallesera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring our overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this our last stop and settling down. I'm writing to ask you, ask the council not to approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you, Jamie Jansen, 1127 Whitcomb Drive.
My name is Pransh Kanskar. I'm a resident of Vallesera community. I'm writing because I'm concerned about application 19137. By Lennar Homes includes proposal to include shingle roof option, please do not approve this application. Introducing, introducing shingle roofs presents several issues. When I make a significant investment decision to buy a property in Vallesera, Lennar gave me a strong impression that the gated community would be of certain standard. This standard included sturdier, pricier, and better looking clay tile roofs. None of the marketing materials ever presented shingle roofs. By now introducing, by now introducing cheaper shingle roofs, Lennar would be violating agreement with current residents. Introducing shingle roofs will certainly have a negative impact on existing property values, dampening my property investment. Such impacts would make Royal Palm Beach a less desirable place to live. While Lennar not including present homeowners in such decisions, future HOA members are left blindsided to problems that will be caused by increased maintenance costs from less durable shingle roofs. I plan on attending the council meeting this week and I would truly appreciate it if you would do the right thing here by asking Lennar to uphold the community standards that was promised. Thank you, Pransh Kanskar, 3232 Dunning Drive.
I hope this email finds you well. My name is Christina Campbell and I am a homeowner at Vallesera. My husband and I made a good faith promise in 2018 when we signed the 11th contract investing into this beautiful community. As an early visionary, we were promised a plan that included Mediterranean homes with tile roofs. We were excited and happy to be one of the first homeowners and invest in a brand new development. We are proud of our community and over the last year have fallen in love with our home and the progress the community has made. We're extremely distraught and disappointed to learn that Lennar has decided to retract their good faith promise of creating a Mediterranean style community with tile roofs and substitute for inexpensive materials such as wood shingles. Not only will this drastically change our modern Mediterranean aesthetic, but it will lower the community's home values by creating an environment that does not match. We choose to invest in the community with similar homes designs to keep up with the same aesthetics from home to home. By utilizing wooden shingles in the construction with a shortened lifespan, it will cause future homeowners to replace them more often, open up risk to damage, and if not done right away, create a horrible eyesore as the tile roofs are far more sturdy, have longer lifespans, and are visually appealing. Not only is this a major issue for the homeowners of Vallesera, but this should be, this should also be a large cause for concern for the Village of Royal Palm Beach as it diminishes the value of our beautiful village and creates an unorganized, inexpensive facade. We will be terribly unhappy if this plan passes and have no choice but to uproot our first home and move to another community that values their good faith promise and how the plan design will accumulate in overtime. I appreciate your time in reading my concerns. Have a nice day. Thank you and warmest regards, Christina Campbell.
I'm a proud owner and resident in Vallesera. We moved into our home, our house last year and have been very pleased with our fellow neighbor, neighbors and the new houses that are coming up in the vacant lots. While I'm happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval, I'm not happy with the fact that some of the designs will be shingle roofs. Currently, Vallesera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of design and prop up the overall property value of the homes in the development. The current proposal of switching to shingle roofs would definitely diminish the beauty of our community and as a result will bring the overall value of our houses down. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingle roofs get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property value, which is a shame because we honestly love the neighborhood and the enhanced quality of life our house provides. I'm writing to ask the council not to approve the mismatch and cheapening of our neighborhood. Thank you, Subberaniam Eiler, 1122 Whitcomb Drive. We are homeowners and residents of Vallesera. We are happy to see additional designs of new homes submitted for approval and are not happy at all with the fact that some of the designs will be constructed with single roofs. Currently, Vallesera has beautiful Mediterranean and modern designs. All the homes in, in the beautiful community have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty of the design and also the value, value of the property. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community and as a result will bring overall value down. Not to mention that the mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Honestly, if these cheaper looking shingles get approved, we might more than likely make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property values, which is a shame because we honestly are looking at making this our last stop. When this issue is resolved, we will be great, we will be very grateful to call Vallesera our home. We moved here from a cheaper looking area and from experience, I can say it's a bad idea. Please keep what we have here. This way, we can keep the home and neighborhood we fell in love with. I am writing to ask that the council does not approve this mismatch and cheapening of our beautiful neighborhood. Please leave it the way it is. Perfect. Thank you, Tammy and Matt Lyon, 3208 Dunning Drive.
Good morning, my name is Kenneth Stolowich and I'm a resident, and I reside in Vallesera. I'm a, I am opposed to the change that Lennar is requesting to change the model style of homes to have shingle roofs. Not only it will lower the quality and price of the homes in our community, but it will also affect the Royal Palm Beach area and the Crestwood area. Madison Green and surrounding neighborhoods in Crestwood are one of the most beautiful streets that Royal Palm Beach has. To allow this, it would, it would change the character not only Vallesera community but the Crestwood community as a whole. Being a Palm Beach County resident all my whole life, I moved from Wellington to Royal Palm Beach knowing that the city is having positive changes in the community and is really trying for it to be a beautiful place to live. This, the decision on mixed roofs will be turned down for those who take pride and love the value of tile roofs. I ask for you to please hear our voice as a community and as a resident and person that has vested all of our savings in this beautiful community of Vallesera for years to come and our family to grow. We want our investment to be safe and continue to hold its value. With a shingle roof, it will devalue our properties. Please help our voices be heard. Thank you for your time and help. Have a great day. Sincerely, Kenneth Stolowich.
I am part of the neighborhood group that would like to stop the actions of Lennar and their desire to add different roofs than previously discussed. Best regard, Jason Hybro.
I am a homeowner and resident of Vallesera. I'm happy to see many new home designs being submitted for approval in our development minus designs including shingle roofs. Vallesera is my first home here in Florida. Being from New York, I chose the community for its quiet location, overall designs of the model homes offered. Having the tile roofs out of very South Florida feel to this community, shingle roofs are what we put our homes, are what are put on our homes in New York and many areas up north and are not aesthetically pleasing. Having mismatched homes will make our community look cheap in which it is not. Many residents haven't invested a lot of their hard-earned money into purchasing these beautiful homes. We don't need the value of our homes lowered and look aesthetically cheap after investing so much money. I'm writing this email to ask the council in our beautiful town of Royal Palm Beach to not approve the designs and keep our town beautiful. Thank you very much, Mark Jackson, 1129 Whitcomb Drive.
Dear Mayor Pinto, Vice Mayor Hamara, Councilmember Samios, Reduski, and Valentes. Good morning. My husband and I have been residents of the Village of Royal Palm Beach since October of 2000. Over the almost 20 years that we have lived in Royal Palm Beach, we have watched Royal Palm Beach grow and develop into a thriving community while still maintaining that small town feel that all of us crave from our childhood. Most recently, we sold our home in La Mancha and bought a home in Vallesera. It was almost three and a half years ago that we saw, first saw Lennar sign that they intended to build single-family homes here in Royal Palm Beach and we were thrilled. This gave us the opportunity to buy the new construction home that we always wanted and we could stay in this community that we have come to love. We closed on our home in Vallesera in January of this year. I have reviewed the 94-page application that Lennar has submitted to the village requesting permission, permission to offer and build new homes, models here in Vallesera. However, no pricing information seemed to be available. Reference Lennar's intended price for these newly designed models either publicly or as part of the application. Of note, many of these new models have a shingle roofing material option which is in total contrast to the current tile roofing materials that all the homes have. My research shows that a shingle roof is far less expensive than a tile roof and not as structurally, structurally sound or as long lasting. I have a general objection to the new models and would ask you to deny Lennar's request for the following reasons. First, there is no pricing information generally available. If Lennar intends to offer the new models at a lower price point per square foot than the current models offered, all current residents risk the possibility of declining home values, not because of a global financial issue or a global health pandemic, but because of a business decision by Lennar. Secondly, offering homes at a lower price point reduces the tax revenue that the village would expect to collect and in turn use to continue to maintain and improve our community. Finally, from a purely aesthetic point of view, intermingling of homes with different roofing materials would distract from the beauty of our community no matter what the price point. If the village has pricing information that would be willing to share with me so I could reassess my general objection, I would appreciate that opportunity to consider the information. Thank you all for serving our community and be well. Debbie Stratton Peacock.
My name is Shawn Campbell. I'm a homeowner of Vallesera. My wife and I made an investment into this community in 2018 and then moved into our home in February 2019. We were promised a plan that included Mediterranean homes with tile roofs. We're extremely distraught and disappointed to learn that Lennar has decided to do away with Mediterranean style tile roofs and substitute
and substitute for inexpensive materials such as wood shingles. Not only will this drastically change our Mediterranean aesthetics, but it will lower the community's home values by creating an environment that does not match. We choose to invest in a community with similar home designs to keep up with the same aesthetics for each home. By utilizing wood shingles in the construction with a shortened lifespan, it will cause future homeowners to replace them more often, open up risk to damage, and if not done right away, create a horrible eyesore as tile roofs are far more sturdy, have longer lifespans, and are visually appealing. Not only is this a major issue for the homeowners of Vallesera, but this will be a large cause for concern for the Village Royal Palm Beach as it will diminish the value of the village and create an unorganized, inexpensive look to homes. We will be very upset if this plan passes and have no choice but to sell prior to you the construction of the new and disorganized plan. We will move to another community that values using great, long-lasting materials should this occur, as keeping the overall aesthetics in the community is very important to us. I appreciate your time in reading my concerns. Best regards, Shawn Campbell. Dear Mayor and Council, good morning. I just lived north of Royal Palm Beach in the acreage for about 20 years. I recently moved into Vallesera after an exhaustive countywide search for a new place to call home. I chose Royal Palm Beach for a few reasons. I work for Palm Beach County, and Royal Palm Beach is centrally located, so it's convenient to get to work. Another reason for choosing Royal Palm Beach is the community itself. Royal Palm Beach has always seemed to be a place where you could get to know your neighbors and have a small-town feeling. I chose Vallesera because it's a new construction, so I did not have to do a lot of remodeling or have to think about a roof or appliances for another 10 years. Further, the home in Vallesera are upscale homes at a horrible price. However, since COVID-19 happened shortly after I moved into the community, which was February 5th, Lennar slowed their home building and limited the number of trades who could enter the homes to one. Recently, the home building has picked up tremendously, so business is obviously picking up. After reading the application that Lennar has submitted requesting permission to build new models here in Vallesera, I thought Lennar submitted the changes because they needed to make up the lost revenue due to COVID by decreasing the value of the homes with lower-priced materials. However, as it may have been requested before COVID, they were not selling homes fast enough, so they needed a way to get more money and decided to cheapen the homes. While Lennar has no obligation, they did not even ask one of the over 100 residents who currently live in Vallesera how they felt about a significantly cheaper home built next to their home. Although it is all about money for Lennar, it is also about money for the homeowners because our homes will decrease in value with the lower-priced homes being built right next door. Moreover, as approximately 1/30 development is currently finished, and all the homes have barrel tile roofs, adding shingle roofs will not be aesthetically pleasing when someone drives in the gate. For those reasons, please reject their new models or at least the roofing options of the shingle roofs. Thank you all for serving the community as well. Kind regards, Gina Loviskin, 3256, Dunham Drive. I'm a homeowner and resident of Vallesera. I've been informed that there are now new proposed designs of homes that have been submitted for approval. Though I'm okay with new models within the community, I'm not in agreement with designs that include shingle roofs. We bought one of the first homes built here in Vallesera, and one of the reasons was for the style of the homes. All the homes' models that have been since been built are modern Mediterranean-style with tile roofs. Going forward, if some of the homes have shingle roofs, we do believe this will cheapen the look of our neighborhood as well as bring down the value of our homes. This mismatch will also diminish our investment made in the Village Royal Palm Beach. With this said, I am writing to ask that the council not approve the shingle roof proposal. Thank you, Tom Whitaker, 1112, Bryan LeFayce. I'm a proud homeowner and resident of Vallesera. We moved into the neighborhood last year in August 2019. I'm very pleased to see additional designs of new homes in our neighborhood. However, some of the designs will be shingle roofs, and I am not at all happy regarding this. Currently, our neighborhood has beautiful Mediterranean and modern elevations, and all have tile roofs. These tile roofs add to the beauty and design and the property value as well. However, switching to shingle roofs will absolutely cheapen the look of our community. As a result, will bring our overall value down. This will also diminish our investment made in the Village Royal Palm Beach. If these cheaper-looking shingles get approved, we might be forced to make the decision to sell and leave before the new homes start bringing down our property value. This would be a shame since we moved here with the intent of settling down. I'm writing to request that council not approve the shingle roof and thereby the decrease in property value of our neighborhood. Thank you, Gita Isler, 1122, Woodcomb Drive. By means of this email, I am kindly requesting, as a neighbor of the community of Vallesera, not to approve the shingle roof and the new Vallesera models proposed by Lennar as it will cheapen the look of the existing houses and will decrease the value of the properties. It was indicated to me that I could send this message to you as we do not agree with such proposals as current homeowners. Regards, Diana Veliquas, Vallesera homeowner. I am writing this email due to COVID-19. We are not able to attend the meeting in person next week. I am writing in protest of letting Lennar change the architectural design of the roofs in our community, Vallesera. We in the community bought our homes for the beauty of the architectural look that the area could have. And now the possibility of changing what the community will look like with shingles and the possibility of cheapening the value by mismatch of the architectural designs of the community is not fair. As part of this community, I am voicing my objection in this matter. I would hate to sell and move in order to obtain the value of my investment in this community. If shingles are installed, I'm afraid that is what we will have to do. I say no for application 19137. Thank you for your attention in this matter. I hope we are being heard. Edward and Madison Winston, 3216, Close Court. Last one. I am writing this email in regard to application 19137 by Lennar Homes for architectural approval of shingle roofs. I am a homeowner and resident of Vallesera community, and I have come to know about the application submitted for the approval of shingle roofs for our new houses. The reason we bought the house here was due to the architecture and design of the houses in the community. I think if Lennar uses shingle roofs in the future, it will diminish the beauty of the houses and the community as a whole. The tile roof that has been used in the houses add to the beauty of the design. Switching it to shingle roofs would just cheapen the look of the houses. I feel that due to this, the property values of the houses will go down as well. We have made an investment on this house, and we do not want our property values to go down with cheap material being used by the builder. Hence, I sincerely request the council not to approve this application. Thank you for your help in advance. Elena Tamracker, 3232, Dunham Drive. And that is it, Mayor.
Okay. I just want to make one thing clear because I was trying to keep track. I did not hear any... All... What was it, 49 of them? All were opposed to the shingle roofs. That we all...
While the village clerk was reading it, I believe it might have been a typo in one of the ones that they said that I do approve instead of I do not approve. The whole letter was against it.
Okay, but the... Okay. So we all agree that it was unanimous? All of this feedback was no shingle roof? Go ahead, babe.
I don't know if this will get into the record. I just want to say that during the time she was reading that, the sound system was going in and out and difficult for the people that were out there listening to it. And they were complaining as it was going on. I did text to all of them that what Diane was doing and reading 49 objections to Lennar's request for the shingle roofs. So I did send that to all of them. Just recently said she'll be done shortly. Now, I know Jennifer wants to make a presentation.
Yes, I'm going to let Jennifer make a presentation. I just want to finish addressing public comments. Does anyone who has their hand raised that's on the meeting that they would like to comment now?
We do have an attendee up. The hand's down. Never mind. I do not have any hands up. And if any of the other people want to speak, they can unmute their phone now and say something. I did have another group of people that has the ability to unmute themselves and speak.
It's inaudible.
I don't know who that is. Raymond, do you know who that is? Okay.
So we have no one else who wants to comment? In the public?
I do not have anybody. Raymond, you have anybody? Okay. No.
Okay. I do not have any comment cards. There's no one here to submit a comment card. So with that, then, I am going to close public comment on agenda item R4. And Jennifer, you there? I can see you, but I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
I just heard you, yes. So you may do your presentation?
Can you see my screen, correct?
You see the presentation in front of us?
On the record, Jennifer L. of the DBI is just putting applicants when on hold regarding being required development. And the request before you is an architect's request. Although with one request, there are two parts to the request. The first means for ten additional model home designs, and the second is for the additional shingle roof option. The side highlighted in red is located on the north side of the boulevard, the Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. The competition is to fill 154 acres approved with the single family residence to 200,000 units by 2085 this year. The site that's shown here, again, the first 385 units, those that are highlighted in pink or yellow are primarily the box set up for sale at this cost today. And of those, 156,000 units that have been sold, there are five model homes that have been built, nineteen spare homes that have been constructed over not sold, and there are nineteen additional spare homes in the Village Royal Palm Beach. The remaining 182 units that is tonight's report would benefit from additional model homes and that possible additional roof option. And I wrote it into the two parts, just two different model homes. There are ten different model homes. While I won't go through each one specifically, they are going to stand through on the screen currently. Each one has a standard elevation and an alternative elevation. The homes themselves range in size from just 14 feet to under 3400 feet. So they're primarily in the same size of model homes that have already been approved for the community today. Each home are size beginning in the mid 500s and that is consistent with what's been sold today and what's still going to be offered in the future. The second part of the request of the possible additional roof material option, again, I believe this clearly indicates the significance. The original approval in 2015 and '17, the architectural style was this Mediterranean style as hardened red, the purple, these had a brown, this kind of gray, and a pair of red colorings. It was just one thing for two, as shown on the screen. And even some of those elevations with Mediterranean style and the different options selling a whole community today and previous experience. In 2018, they introduced a transitional architecture of the city and this introduced a flat tile base that was still in the brown and gray tone, still in seeking the overall earth tone or the green space. Even some of the model homes that have that new style that is still working or are available in the community today. Again, the proposal in mind is not to use the option, but to offer a third new style option, which would be a three-dimensional shingle. It would come in the gray and brown colors, keeping with the earth tone. And it would be similar to the cords on the line that is shown in that flat tile base that I presented here just now. Again, there are no changes to the color, the trim, the architectural self, the lighting, or the window and framing. All of those were made consistent with what the city approved by the village. A street case is example of a community that would have the various tile within, although this is not in Royal Palm Beach, there are communities within, um, Western Palm County, and offers similar type of model homes that are being constructed within all there, like sports. Again, with the shelves for this specific use of Spanish tile and the shingle tile. And another example here, the left, you have the shingle roof tile and outside it would be the Spanish tile. Well, again, the proposal is to provide an additional option, cost savings for the different items for that option ranging from around $13,000 to $17,000. Yes, there are tile roofs that come with a combination of both the material, it's going to the construction force home as the shingle roofs obviously are less big than a tile roof. And therefore, that's where the cost saves in there comes into play. And the staff has recommended approval in part, additional model homes. They recommend denial in part for the shingle material option. The planning done to mention this, then, approval of the entire request unanimously and the follow-up will be considered. After the answer and questions that you may have, it's possible that it aired, so I may have to check them out for me too. But I'm available to the question.
Okay. Thanks, Jennifer. At this time, we'll open up for comments or questions for members on council. Okay. Any comments or questions? Before I ask for a motion, I'd just like to restate exactly what we're looking at here. The recommendation that we received from staff is approval of the ten new models, but not approval, no approval for the shingles. I'd just like to comment on the input we've gotten from the residents who currently live in that community. I think they make a very valid point. This community is about, I don't know, halfway through build-out. And one of the more important issues when a citizen is choosing to buy into a new community that didn't exist, this was a new community being built, they really put a lot of creeps into the promises that are made to them on what this community's going to be as it's built out. And it's clear, these residents were told that it was going to be a community with homes that had the tile roofs of different variations, which is an important decision when you're making a big investment as such as this is in a home. So I just think that the points that were raised are absolutely valid, that it's inappropriate now to come back and change up what was originally promised and introduce shingle roofs into this community. So that's my thinking on it. Unless there's other comments from members on council, I will look for a motion to approve the recommendation from staff, which will approve the ten new models, but will not approve shingle roofs.
Make a motion to approve the ten additional models, but to deny the shingle move retro option.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You have no opposed? Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved as stated in the motion. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay. Moving right along. This is a public hearing to consider. Agenda item R5 is a public hearing to consider application. Okay, moving right along. This is a public hearing to consider, agenda item R five is a public hearing to consider application, um, two zero dash zero seven. An application by Cutler and Herring, an adoption of resolution two zero dash one four confirming the council's action. The appellate, the applicant is seeking preliminary plat approval for one parcel of land totaling approximately fourteen point two two acres for a property located at one zero seven zero one Okeechobee Boulevard. And graphic.
Great. Um, thank you mayor. This is an application for preliminary, preliminary plat approval for parcels of land totaling fourteen point two two acres located at one zero seven zero Okeechobee Boulevard. The formerly known as First Baptist Church and Connect Church. Site has a land use designation of commercial and zoning designation of general commercial. With more of the plat before and the plat requirements of Village Code, this is in section twenty-two, dash twenty-two, and section twenty-six, dash eighty-four. It's not advancing.
We still have the old presentation up.
And, uh, once this comes up, I'll show you the illustration of the plat itself. Planning and zoning commission considered the application on June twenty-third, twenty twenty, and recommended approval by vote of four to zero. Um, staff is recommending approval of this application. Here's an illustration of the plat. And staff is, again, staff is recommending approval.
Can you orientate us what we're looking at here?
Yes, this is, um, the, the currently known as Connect Church, formerly known as First Baptist Church.
And that's the A L F to the right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, this is what the plat will look like, uh, if approved by council. Um, again, P and Z approved this by vote of four to zero, staff is recommending approval by vote of four to zero, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is the applicant on this, uh, virtual meeting? Would they like to make a comment?
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, would you like to make a comment?
George, how are you?
I'm George here, the governor, the agency, or the applicant, First Baptist Church, um, I want to, uh, see in the detail there the, uh, the recent aspect of nature, we really appreciate it all the hard work that they put in to, uh, to this project, it's been a long time since I've been here, especially with the past couple months, with all the, uh, the health crisis going on. But, um, I'll be actually doing my best to, um, to keep it locked with the, uh, church, uh, do you have any questions?
Thanks George. Um, you, any interpretation for us?
Yeah, he probably said that he agrees with my presentation and our recommendation.
All right, let that, so let that be recorded to record. Okay, thanks George. Um, at this time, I'll ask for public comments. Do we have any prior comments for the public?
We have public comments, this is agenda.
Okay. Right, do you have anyone with their hand raised who would like to comment from the public?
I do not have anybody with their hand raised, and on the other list of people, if anybody wants to speak, now would be the time to unmute yourself and speak. Seeing no one, no comment.
We have no public comment cards submitted here because there's no one here to submit any. So therefore, I will be closing public comment on agenda item R five and open up for comments from members of council. If there are no comments, then I will look for a motion for approval on a recommendation from staff.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R five.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that the general item R five was approved five to zero. Agenda item R six is a public hearing to consider application two zero dash four two, an application by Cutler and Herring. Inc., an adoption of landscape waiver number two zero dash zero two confirming the council's action. Applicant is seeking waivers from the Village Landscape Code, section one five dash one three three, vehicle use areas, parking lot divider strips and islands, and section one five dash one, uh, one three one, perimeter landscaping. Buffers required, and section one five dash one four three, plant material standards for approximately fourteen point two two acre parcel of land located at one zero seven zero one Okeechobee Boulevard. So this is part of the same project? Okay, go ahead.
Um, over, over the next few slides, uh, we'll be touching upon those various landscape waiver requests. Along the south property line, the applicant is requesting the elimination of the three-foot berm requirement. Waiver is being requested since this is an existing condition, and the berm was not required during the, the original construction. The inclusion of a berm will be detrimental to the existing mature trees, and the areas which he's talking about are, um, down here where you see the elimination of the berm, and that's where construct, or where you actually see development out there today, is current condition out in front of the existing building. Along the south property line adjacent to the, um, uh, is requested reduction of the core, required twenty-five foot buffer along Wildcat Way to ten feet and tapering down to eight feet. Reduction in the required buffer width along Wildcat Ways due to the irregular shape of the property will greatly impact the reasonable use of the property. Along the northeast property line, the applicant is requesting the elimination of the berm requirement. You can see my cursor, this is, that's the area here. This waiver is being requested as a direct result in conflict with the existing wetland on the northern portion of the property. And also along the west property line, the applicant is requesting to eliminate the berm requirement. This waiver is being requested because if the three-foot berm were to be provided, the existing mature kindred trees would be eliminated. Similar scenario with the south buffer along Okeechobee Boulevard where it's an existing condition and wasn't required at the time of construction. A waiver from section fifteen one thirty-three perpendicular divider strips to the north of the existing church building. The applicant is requesting a reduced, a reduced width of the perpendicular landscape divider strip. The applicant is proposing to reduce the required five-foot perpendicular landscape, landscape strip on a three and a half feet. Uh, the applicant contends the perpendicular landscape strip is, does, does meet the minimum landscape material requirements, but there is a two-foot vehicle overhang, overhang into the strip. And this is the most reasonable configuration due to the dimensions of the property. Directly north and east of the church building, the applicant is requesting a reduced width for a perpendicular landscape divider strip. If you can see my cursor, this is the one that we were speaking of here. The applicant contends that this waiver is justified due to the curvature of the parcel. The internal layout of the square parking configuration caused a pinch point on the perpendicular landscape strip. This also means that there's a much wider section of the dividing strip, as well as landscape material requirements within the dividing strip is being met. A waiver to section fifteen one thirty-three, double terminal islands in various areas of landscape plan. The applicant is requesting a reduction in the requirement of eight-foot wide double terminal island. And I will just kind of skip what I have here. This is similar to, um, the previous request where you may have a smaller portion, but then also a larger portion of, of that, that terminal island to make up for the reduced, um, width in the other areas. Okay. Waiver from section fifteen one forty-three, print C, the waiver request is to allow for a reduction in plant material standards for the required Village Code mitigation trees for the project. Village Code requires that upon planting of mitigation trees, they have a height of fourteen feet with a diameter at breast height of two and a half inches. Based on the updated tree survey, there are two hundred and fifty-five required mitigation trees for the project. Additionally, thirty-three preservation trees are required. All preservation requirements are being met with the proposed plan for tree locations. However, the mitigation code requires replacement trees to be fourteen feet tall and two and a half inches in diameter at breast height at the time of planting. Trees of this size require equipment to be placed, um, require equipment to place them outside due to their large size. South Florida Water Management District does not allow the use, um, of these types of equipment within the wetland hour, area. However, planting native trees within a wetland by hand is not restricted. The applicant is proposing an enhanced mitigation design utilizing trees that can be planted by hand. Burying tree heights and native species will be provided, um, in natural design that will enhance the wetland areas as well as the views from the residential properties to the north. To compensate for the reduced size for the mitigation trees, the applicant is proposing to plant a hundred and sixty-eight additional trees above what is required as code minimum. A total of seventy-six mitigation trees are proposed to meet the minimum size requirements of fourteen feet tall. A waiver is being requested for the remaining one hundred and seventy-nine required mitigation trees to allow those trees to be installed at less than the required fourteen-foot minimum. Um, the waiver request, um, the next waiver request is to allow royal palm trees to be counted on a one to three, or a one palm tree to one shade tree ratio for the required shade trees, where Village Code requires them to be counted at three palms to one shade tree ratio. The applicant contends due to royal palm trees' mature size, they provide a much larger canopy than other palm trees. Royal palm trees are proposed to be utilized in the narrow landscape area along, along Wildcat Way. A waiver request is, next waiver request is to allow a row of sixteen parking spaces with a landscape island to break them up. Village Code requires a landscape parallel divider strip every ten spaces, and again, this is another existing, um, configuration. Um, village staff is recommending approval in part of application twenty forty-two, the adoption of landscape waiver number twenty dash two regarding landscape waivers. Um, all portions of this landscape waiver request, other than the use or the planting of the mitigation trees at a maturity less than what is required by Village Code. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, voted to approve this application by a vote of four to zero. With that being said, mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you for any questions.
I just want to be clear on what staff is recommending. Approval of the application two zero dash four two, what, was there an exception to that?
With the exclusion or the recommendation of denial to allow for the planting of the mitigation trees at a maturity less than what code requires at fourteen feet tall and two and a half feet at breast height in the wetland area.
Everything except the tree.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I just wanted to be clear. All right, one other thing though, one housekeeping issue I overlooked. Matty, I believe this is, this item is, uh, quasi judicial. Do you agree?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. I'll put this item in the next one, I'll put it in the mail, and, 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 what do you like to add?
One question though, can you, can, hold it a minute. Can you, since the next item is also related, uh, can you swear them in for that one too as well right now, agenda item R seven?
I'll, I'll put it in one time for both items.
Can you talk on the?
I've got nothing on that translation.
Uh, none?
But, thank you, Brad.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Brad, you'll finish your, your presentation? Okay, George, are you up?
Good morning. Thank you very much. I'm Mr. Ford Smith for the record, uh, representing the applicant here. Uh, we thank Brad for very much for his presentation. Uh, there are quite a few waivers and statutes that need all of them, and for the other four mitigation trees, I'll focus all my time on that. Um, my name is Mr. Sherman.
Yes, other than what I can help you with that?
Yes, uh, again, we're not going to talk too much about talking about the mitigation. And the fact that a, um, mitigation code doesn't require a palm tree to be required, like two-one-two fifty-five, maybe six trees, but I had to say, uh, literally restricted, uh, areas, wetlanded, what they would come from. Uh, planning those restrictions, uh, I think, in that, um, in our goal is to impart with store, that it gives the wetland on property, like planting trees, uh, around, as well as a kind of smaller age, so it's not to manage, uh, all the old, the far properties from that out there. Uh, planning small trees, you can do by hand, it's all, uh, by, uh, on that one. Um, and then he said you're not providing one hundred and sixty-eight additional mitigation trees. There's a range, there's, um, a range from sixteen up to fourteen feet. Um, so we are still providing, uh, six mitigation trees after which we can try to plan. Uh, the intention of the mitigation code is to provide the mitigation trees, uh, allowing for that standard coverage, with may, in that quantity as much as possible. However, we provide those, that standard coverage, uh, which is, uh, mass, is what it's required. Um, the goal is to keep the freedom, uh, in the, uh, benefit of this current management. As we always provide a yet on restoration project, um, as part of the project. So, um, I don't have anything else to add, or give any questions, or anything to add.
Uh, you have any translations for us?
Yes, um, I can, um, try my best, um, to summarize what George had presented at the P and Z meeting, which I don't think deviated much for tonight's presentation. Um, what he was, what he was trying to convey is, is that, um, with the, to be allowed to plant these trees at the maturity at which he is requesting would provide much more, obviously, as it matures, and it will mature, um, much more vegetation and screening of this project to the residents to the north and their view corridors on into the parking areas and on into, um, Okeechobee Boulevard. You will have, um, the, the trees will be planted at a maturity, again, not what our code requires, but you will have much more of them, is what he was trying to convey at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And he did agree with our assessments and recommendations on the other ones. It was just this one that, of course, that he disagreed with. Um, that's pretty much sums up what he had presented it.
So, our code is saying that trees should be planted at full maturity?
At, at fourteen feet tall and two and a half inches caliper at breast height, right.
And what is, what is it they want to do?
They want to plant them at a lower maturity where they can plant them by hand because the Army Corps of Engineers doesn't allow for heavy equipment to enter into these wetland areas, which the maturity of which our code requires, you're not carrying those suckers in. You're going to have to come in with heavy equipment in order to plant them. That's why.
So, we're saying there's a, a technical impediment from the, being able to do what we would like them to do, which is compliance with the code?
Right, right, and they, they, they will be.
That's driving the request for the waiver here.
Right, and, and to make up for that, um, maturity at original planting, they are proposing to plant an additional upwards of, I think it was a hundred and fifty, maybe, uh, one hundred and sixty-eight additional trees. Which is a significant number.
Okay, but staff's recommendation was denied based on technic, the technical merit?
We go, we strictly go by what our code.
But you are saying that there is, there is, it sounds like a legitimate, a legitimate impairment that's from another agency's ground rules that, that creates a problem from them doing this.
We, we evaluate it strictly by what our code requires. Is it an unreasonable request?
Okay, got it. Um.
So, how, how large are the trees that they are proposing?
George, did you hear that question? How large would some of these trees be, um, that you are wanting to plant? At the reduced maturity?
In order to provide. Keep communicating, council?
Ye- yes.
Can the chief, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, the trees being proposed are with from six feet up to fourteen feet requirement. We are providing seven to six trees past the four requirement. Those trees are for perimeter, as well as kind of the drainage, uh, tension areas on the property. If they're, can be planned by assuming is necessary, uh, the small trees are centered in the north east corner. Where that, that means, uh, within the wetland, uh, those trees are in from six, eight feet, twelve feet up, with up to fourteen, um, requirement, for, uh.
Sounds like you said.
We, that's what I'm saying, so.
I think I heard six to twelve.
Six, six to twelve feet? And they're proposing to plant an additional one hundred and fifty?
Hundred and sixty-eight.
Hundred and fifty-eight trees?
Sixty-eight.
One-six-eight.
One, one-six-eight, I'm sorry, okay. Okay.
Jay? Any, any, you want to comment on this? No?
Bradford, I don't know if you know, but what is your estimated timeframe on a tree to go from six feet to fourteen feet?
I do not know the answer to that question. They, they do, they will have a, an approved landscape plan showing the locations of these individual trees. One of the things that you would want to, um, keep an eye on is, is the, these trees dying, these younger trees dying. Uh, they have a, an approved landscape plan, so there, they will have to stick to that approved landscape plan. And they'll have to go back in and they will have to replant these trees that may die, um, over and over again.
Which would include the additional one hundred and sixty-eight plantings to talk about?
Correct, every single one of them. Um, I, I could not answer that question, I'm sorry.
Okay, no further comments from members on council. I think, uh, trying to sum, summarize this up a little bit. Um, looks like, you, you know, staff is clearly recommending approval of all the other items in this waiver request. And the, it sounds like we kind of have a little bit of a catch-twenty-two, alright, with, with tree waiver. The catch-twenty-two being that there's another agency, you said it was the Army Corps of Engineers?
Yes.
Who's, who will weigh in and say, no, you can't go within this particular area because it's a wetland. We can't get around that, so it seems.
Sorry, South Florida Water Management District, for the record.
Okay, that's okay. Um, still another very important agency that will have precedence here. Um, so, it seems to me that the, I will look for a motion then for approval, uh, of this entire, um, agenda item R six.
Motion to approve it to agenda item R six.
A second.
Alright, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you're new, opposed, Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R six was approved, five-zero. Moving on, agenda item R seven is a public hearing to consider application number one nine zero, one nine dash zero zero seven one. An application by Cutler and Herring, Inc. The applicant is seeking site plan modification approval and architectural approval for a new worship hall, accessory, accessory building, and to expand the existing eight-point-six-seven acre church site to include an additional five-point-five-five acres for a total land area of approximately fourteen-point-two-two acres on a proposed site plan for property located at one zero seven zero Okeechobee Boulevard. Um, this item was already sworn in, right? Matty, we're good with that? Okay, and I guess, just want to make sure, what we read, what I read here is they're, they're adding acreage to the, to the current site, so they're expanding the site to some fourteen acres. So with that, um, Bradford, you are?
Great, if I could get the share screen, please? The applicant is seeking a site plan amendment and architectural approval for a new worship hall, accessory buildings, and to expand the existing eight-point-six-seven acre church site to include an additional five-point-five-five acres for a total land area of fourteen-point-two-two acres. The architectural approval request is for future buildings and structures along with the landscape plan. Site is situated within the general commercial zoning district. The applicant has indicated in their justification statement that the ultimate goal is to expand the church building areas and to use the additional parcel of land to ensure adequate parking for existing and proposed place of worship use areas. Oh, this isn't advancing again, Raymond. Oh, there we go. Um, the applicant is proposing to develop the site in a nu, in a number of sequences, starting with the parking areas. The new parking areas will support the church during construction activities for new buildings being proposed. For the submitted sequencing plan, phase one A consists of the paved parking area directly to the north of the existing church property. Sequence two A consists of the paved parking field on the far west side of the existing church property. Sequence two B consists of all the building improvements. And here is a, an illustration of the east side of the site plan. In reviewing the petition, village staff considered conformity with the village Royal Palm Beach's zoning code pertaining to, um, the general commercial zoning district. As it relates to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, curvy area, parking requirements, landscape areas, maximum building height. Overall, and except for the landscape waivers, the proposed site plan is in accordance with the village's requirements for the general commercial zoning district. Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on June twenty-third. Recommended approval by a vote of four to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this site plan. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradford, um.
I believe it was, it was four, four to zero, was what I.
Okay, on here it's three to one.
It says three to one on the backup.
Yeah. It was a, okay, it was four to zero?
Uh, yeah, I believe it was four to.
That's a script, Aaron.
Okay. Uh, does the applicant have any comments?
Yes. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's a difficult, uh, for the, um, again, uh, the commissioner, on behalf of the applicant, you have to pass this search. Uh, one of their, uh, previously, the first, uh, property, uh, combined church as part of the primary class, fifteen acres. Uh, two properties, the expansion of the, uh, it's a theme church facility. Uh, a number of the lawyers were affected, we've seen the price expand. Um. Uh, a little bit of background on property, previously known by the village, needs, uh, transferred, uh, a couple of and, uh, then, uh, came under control for, for that church, including C. And a number of others have been, uh, for the zoning, and, uh, the property, being a year five, uh, like that, it's been tight back for the which represents the build-out plan for, uh, future church expansion. Uh, church building coming back for architecture approval, um, for the building, that is the first. Um, and the, uh, parking facilities that you stand is, you keep, uh, affording to, uh, the first plan. Uh, starting with, uh, smaller sections, more for the church. And, uh, in the final phase, keeping the construction, making the building more, uh, architecture approval. Uh, the church is, uh, in terms of, uh, the different, uh, select, uh, we do see that the, uh, the church sanctuary, uh, associated generally with the new church expansion, which is about forty-two thousand. Uh, currently, it's, it's actually, uh, it's just, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the facility. Uh, you take that too much more tough, um, the, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, project, uh, and, uh, we, uh, as, as, as it is.
Okay, are you completed? Is that it?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Um, say anything else? Go ahead.
Uh, that concludes my presentation. I think there's any questions, I'll watch.
He says that concludes his presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, George. Uh, anything else you want to translate? No?
I hit the high points.
But, yeah, but staff's recommendation was for approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, in terms of public comment, uh.
No public comment.
No, no prior comments came in, okay.
That's correct.
Ray, anyone with their hand raised, or wants to unmute?
No, there's nobody with their hand raised, and if anybody from the other group would like to speak, you can unmute your phones now and speak. Not hearing any.
Okay, and we have no one here who submitted any comment cards from the public, so with that, I will close public comment on agenda item R seven, and look for comments from members on council. If there are no comments from council members, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, uh, regular agenda item number seven?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R seven was approved. Somebody said something? Oh. Oh, okay. We just got it.
No, that's good.
Let the record show that agenda item five zero, uh, was, uh, R seven was approved, five zero. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item R eight is a public hearing for the first reading and approval of application, uh, no, one nine dash one-two-seven and ordinance number one zero zero two. An application by Kimberly Horn regarding a zoning text amendment to chapter twenty-six of the village zoning co, code to allow electric vehicle charging stations as accessory uses within certain zoning districts and establish a supplemental, uh, regulations for these electric vehicle charging stations. Okay, it sounds interesting. Who's going to present?
Our attorney is going to present.
Okay, Matty, you are.
Thank you, I have to read this one, and, uh, I don't, in the title, and now, because I'm, uh, a few, um, questions. But, as you said, it's ordinance one zero zero two, you're running for the, uh, council, the, uh, on the, uh, on the, uh, six, uh, eight. Article four, open air regulation, section twenty-six, seven, accessory uses, uh, the, 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 the structures, all along, the, 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 uh,